I would like to, with the commission's approval, nominate Don Brown again as chair. He's got the city council's support for the last two years and we've been very effective. So, I would like to see him maybe stay in this one more year and possibly keep the two vice chair and pro temps as is, if that would be acceptable to the commission.
Commissioner Tally?
I would like to second that proposal.
A proposal by Mr. Crandall, and a second by Commissioner Tally for the chairman, vice chair, and chair pro temp to remain his last year. That's Mr. Brown, Mr. Crandall, and Mr. Blackwell. Do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Probably one of the most important tasks that we do in the planning commission or a subset of it is the design review subcommittee, which is also our cultural heritage committee. If the commission would be amenable, I would like to nominate a slate with Park Crandall to remain as the chair of it, Commissioner Wu to continue where he's at. I would like to bring some experience back on board, design review, with Mr. Jim Ruen with an alternate of Mr. Blackwell. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Brown for the design review subcommittee, and a second by Commissioner Tally. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes 7-0. We now need a selection of a coastal advisory committee member. I would like to nominate, if I could, Mr. Michael Smith, who's been on that coastal advisory committee before, from the Parks and Rec Commission, brings a lot of heart and fervor and a lot of motion and a lot of passion to that coastal committee. Would you be willing to serve on that, Mr. Smith?
Sure. And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Brown, a second by Mr. Ruen for Mr. Smith on the coastal advisory committee member. Hello? Are you okay?
I'm sorry. First by, sorry.
First by Brown. Second by Ruen. Motion by Brown, second by Ruen for Mr. Smith to be a planning commission member of the coastal advisory committee.
Thank you.
Okay. Is everything else clear? Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
With that, we'll move on to, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes 7-0. Got ahead of myself. I apologize. Item five tonight is minutes of the planning commission meeting of 21 June 2017. With Mr. Ruen, I suppose, will have to abstain. And also Commissioner Tally. And Commissioner Smith, you were also absent that night, right? So, we have enough to...
I'll go ahead. Anybody have any changes to those minutes? Then I will move that we accept the minutes of the regular meeting of the City of San Clemente Planning Division, June 21, 2017.
Okay. Do I have a second for the minutes of the meeting of June 21, 2017?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Crandall, second by Commissioner Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four, with three abstentions. With that, item six, oral and written communication. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not on our agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and city of residence and make your presentations. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have any cards for item six?
No.
Okay. We now have item seven, the consent calendar. Item 7A is Richelieu Speed Cushions by Mr. Frank. It's a consent. Does anybody care to pull it? We do have speaker cards, so I guess we better pull the item. So, I think we need to pull 7A for discussion. With that, do we have any motion on that?
If no one's going to pull 7B, I'll move the balance.
7B?
Oh.
Yeah. It was going to be a no then. So, 7A and 7B will be pulled off consent. And with that, we'll start the public hearing process. And welcome, our city traffic engineer, Mr. Frank, to the microphone.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Tom Frank, and I'm the engineering transportation manager. And would you like a brief staff report before you hear public comments or after? Before? Okay. All right. So, there's a pretty detailed report in front of you. I'll give a fairly brief overview, and then if you have more questions or detailed questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The city received a petition from the neighborhood in January of 2016 requesting speed humps for Riachelo between Cerro Montoso and Camino Veracruz, about half the length of the Riachelo Circle in that neighborhood. The petition was signed by 88 percent of the residents between Camino Cerro Montoso and Camino Veracruz. Staff conducted the traffic analysis, the traffic counts, and the accident review. And we found that we wanted to report that information per our traffic calming program to the residents. So, we followed up with a neighborhood meeting in November 14 of 2016, and we reviewed the findings with the neighborhood. And in that meeting, we found that the second half of the Riachelo neighborhood wanted to also submit a petition. So, we received a second petition in March of 2017, and the petition for the second half of the neighborhood was signed by 51 percent of the residents. So, the combined total for people signing a petition was 69 percent of the residents on Riachelo. So, I'll just focus on what the traffic data resulted in, what we found. The 85th percentile on Riachelo southbound is 35 miles per hour, and the northbound is 25 miles an hour. The combined northbound and southbound 85th percentile is 33 miles per hour. Speeding in the area is occasional, and it doesn't really pertain to any one time or time of the week. Approximately 19 percent of vehicles are traveling 32 miles per hour or greater, with 34 vehicles exceeding 45 miles an hour during the one-week survey period. The speeding patterns on Riachelo are found to be higher in the southbound direction, with 85th percentile speed 10 miles per hour over the posted speed when compared to similar residential streets in San Clemente. So, our speed hump policy in our traffic calming program includes that if 67 percent of the residents on a street are in favor of the speed hump installation, staff will bring the item to the planning commission. And then, I think I'll skip, just for brevity, the distinction between a speed cushion versus a speed hump, or maybe I could just explain it real briefly. A speed hump is typically constructed out of asphalt and crosses the entire street length. A speed cushion is a rubber speed hump essentially, but it's built in sections, and there's a spacing that's provided that allows fire trucks to cross over the speed cushion without feeling the bump. So, the spacing is spaced according to the spacing of a typical fire engine.
You mentioned in your report that you're going to run this by the fire authority. Have they come back?
That's right. We actually have run it past the fire authority, and it also conforms with their standards, so we're not anticipating any problems.
They've concurred in with this installation?
They haven't given us a final determination on it, but we have submitted it, and we've been in conversations with them.
Okay.
And they have approved similar installations in other neighborhoods. Let's see. So, the proposed design essentially is covered in attachment two. It shows the proposed locations. There are 10 speed cushions on Riachelo, as shown in attachment two. The cushions are positioned to avoid being in front of a driveway, and they're spaced to provide adequate speed control. And as mentioned in the agenda report and already mentioned tonight, we have submitted it to OCFA for their review, and it conforms with their standards, so we're not expecting any difficulties.
Any commissioners have a question of staff at this time? Commissioner Ruen, I guess your light came on first.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One is, the petitions that came in, did that include residents on, I'm going to mispronounce these, Yano and Cerca? Or was it only for Riachelo?
The petition, actually, I believe, you know, I'm not sure of the answer to that. I believe it's Riachelo, but there could have been, I'm not sure.
So, we don't know if those are, the ancillary streets included, were included in the...
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the proposed locations for the speed humps, do we know if the owners in front of those homes are on, if those owners in front of those homes are onboard? Have they kind of given a thumbs up?
Right, yeah. We've had our designers contacting the owners to make sure they're okay with the location.
Has anyone...
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Let's see. Yeah, and I wanted to ask, just if you had an opinion, if we put the speed bumps here as shown in attachment two, could that potentially impact other streets? I'm thinking in particular Yano, with people trying to avoid the speed bumps, maybe Yano might get more traffic or faster traffic?
Right.
Is that a possibility?
It's a possibility. We don't think that'll likely occur because of the patterns in the neighborhood, but we'll be monitoring it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Blackwell? I'm just going to go right to left, because I know Mr. Smith wants to say something.
Okay.
Yes, in the report, there's a reference to the City of San Clemente's speed bump policy. So, I pulled up, clicked on the link, and I just went through, and there are eight basic characteristics, or eight criteria that we look at when we consider installing one. And there were a couple that I was wondering about. These aren't necessarily requirements, so we don't have to look at each of these.
Right.
These are just sort of guidelines, things we look for.
Right.
Okay. One was the grade. Can you talk about the grade again in this area? Is it less or greater than 6 percent?
It's less than 6 percent, yeah.
Less than 6 percent, okay. And do 15 percent of the drivers exceed the posted speed limit? Has that been...
I don't think, I'm not sure about that actually criteria. I didn't bring the overall checklist on it, but we did bring it to the planning commission because we had over 67 percent of the support for the petition.
90 percent of vehicles pull 32 miles an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking about number of people speeding, you mean?
Yes, because I was reading some of the letters, and it looked like that was the main issue, was the speed.
Definitely, right.
Okay, but we don't know what that percentage was. Do we just have a...
Let's see. Well, it says 19 percent of the vehicles are traveling over 32 miles per hour, so yeah.
And that's all day? That's, or just during peak?
That's just, that's during our survey data, so we're, yeah. That's all we can gauge it off of.
Okay. And then the average traffic volume is between 500 and 3,000 trips per day, but that's in both directions, according to the policy?
Correct.
How many trips do we have per day?
It was 600 vehicles per day?
It's real well within that.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Great, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, so my questions are really around the kind of underlying data. So, on the petitions that we had signed, so how many residents are there that live on that street?
Actually, I probably have to count that on that circle, right?
And how did we, I guess the other thing is, in any type of a petition, did we have to authenticate signatures and authenticate?
Right.
Do we go through that?
We did do that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we're sure that's good data?
Right, yes.
Okay. And I did notice the traffic humps allow for pedestrian and bike, like I would say scooters, because I've got kids, to be able to traverse those without having...
That's correct. The space, typically the bikes would use that space, so they wouldn't have to go over the hump, unless if they want to.
How wide, how wide is that space generally?
I think...
The gap? Yeah, the gap.
It's shown actually on...
Is it a couple of feet? I mean, is it...
No, it's not a couple of feet. It's like a foot.
Okay.
It's like 12 inches, maybe 14 inches. It's shown on attachment two, or to the right of that schematic, showing the fire trucks straddling the cushion.
And I saw one of the comments that we received for public comment, I guess somebody that wasn't going to be here was talking about the coloration of those matching other speed humps. So, I assume they're not always just black and white?
Actually, they are typically black and white, and they don't match the pavement exactly. You can see a similar example on the street, which is up by Vista Del Mar off of Talega. I could probably show it on Google Maps. Yeah, Portofino, exactly. Yeah, if you go into that private development, they have the speed cushions.
And my, my last question is, in your professional opinion, do you think that installing these cushions would resolve the traffic problems that the residents have, I guess, petitioned about?
Yeah, I think it would help address the speeding issue, yes.
Commissioner Smith's coming back.
81 residents.
Tom, you have 10 of these speed cushions shown on the map. I'm wondering why so many? Why wouldn't you say do six, where you could have two at the parts where the roads come into the roadway, instead of so many other ones? It seems like a lot.
Right, so we looked at the spacing that would provide an even speed through the neighborhood. If you just, if you don't put enough and you don't put them evenly spaced, what happens is people slow down for the cushion and then accelerate between the cushions. So, we looked at different studies using the cushions and came up with a distance or spacing to provide the desired speed of around 25 miles an hour or less.
So, are we looking, then, at what these cushions are going to look like on that, the black and white?
Yeah, essentially, essentially.
And do the neighbors know that that was what they're going to get?
We showed them pictures, our staff did, during the neighborhood meetings.
Okay. I also noticed in the neighborhood, I drove around, and there's speed humps on other streets close. And they are asphalt burns with some white markings, but they also have a "speed bump ahead" sign at 15 miles an hour.
That's right.
Are these speed cushions going to be signed with a slowdown speed, like those?
They'll have advanced signing, yes. Similar signing.
Will it be 15 miles an hour?
Correct, right.
Okay. My questions.
Mr. Wu?
Tom, for the traffic calming of this neighborhood, have you considered any other alternative design? For example, a speed hump is one option, but I remember when we did that at Pico, at the end of the Pico, we painted a part of the road, and we made the road narrow. This right of way appeared to be about 50 feet, I guess. The curb-to-curb is 40 feet, very, very wide, and that's part of the reason why people travel so fast.
Right, exactly.
But you can put a diet on it, without substantially change, spending lots of money. You have a real estate, and then we can mark off 5, 10 feet to make it, you know, parkway or bike lane, or simply putting paint there, so it's not a driver and reconfigure the lines.
Right, and you've probably seen us bring before you examples of when we do restriping. In fact, Chair Brown has, yeah, his street has...
10 feet mile.
Similar project, what you're describing. In our traffic calming program, we meet with the residents, and we take direction from the residents on what design measures they'd like to see incorporated, so we're taking their lead.
So, the residents came up with some...
That's right. They came up with a speed bump and cushion proposals.
Okay. Someone had gone to the traffic calming manual.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tally?
I just had, I just had two quick comments. So, I live in Forrester Highlands, so right over there, and I take my kids to school every day down there. So, one of the things that may be not realized is I believe a lot of people park on the streets down there, and so if you're actually reducing the size of the street, you might be impacting parking on the side. I know we deal with that. That would be a big detriment to us.
We're not discussing it.
My other question, how much do these cost?
Right.
I'm not curious, I'm very curious.
Yeah. So, we heard per, like, per installation, it's about $500 per cushion, but the total cost may, we don't know. We have to bid it, and there's signs involved, so it could be $20, $30,000.
Thank you, just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
For the record, we generally have about $80,000 in the budget every year for traffic calming. That we looked at in the SIP program that came through here in May, it's kind of an annual number. I keep suggesting it bump up a little bit, but it doesn't make the cut. Commissioner Ruen?
Yeah, could you put your safety engineer hat on for a minute, and maybe you can give us...
That hat's always on.
Yeah. And as it should be for us, too, but to my knowledge, at least I didn't see anything in the staff report, have there been any accidents or injuries on the streets? And given what you've done with the mobility assessment down there, can you provide any probabilities about how dangerous it is as compared to other areas?
No. I can't give you probabilities on how dangerous it is relative to other areas. I can give you probability relative to other streets that are 40 feet wide. It's very similar to other streets that are designed at a 40-foot width. So, what we found, just to repeat for those of you that haven't heard it, when streets are designed at a narrower width, we tend to see lower speeds. So, if you have parking on both sides with a 32-foot curb-to-curb width, that really provides a tight driving area, and a lot of times, actually, some cars have to yield to one another. And you find similar streets in the southwest part of town, but then also in the southwest part of town, you have wider streets like...
Toledo.
Right, Toledo, or, yeah, others. And I can tell when I get a speeding complaint, it's going to be on a street, which is probably 40 feet wide, curb-to-curb. We rarely get speeding complaints on the narrower streets.
Okay.
So, probability-wise, it's very similar to all the other 40-foot curb-to-curb width streets.
Okay, great. Thanks. Do you think the proximity to the school impacts some of the traffic to this neighborhood? I kind of noticed that when traveling through the area.
Right. Commissioner Tally can probably tell you, but there's more traffic when the school lets, during school trips, definitely. And the neighbors, the residents will likely tell you that.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm dropping my kids off every morning, so I do see people, because, and I'm pointing to where it's on the, where Truman Benedict is there. If you come down Cerro Montoso and then you take a, to our right, down to the lower part of the screen, that backs up fairly considerably.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I see people that'll duck in there, or more importantly, they're coming out and going out to work. They'll cut in from Cerro Montosa into that neighborhood to escape out onto Veracruz. And I...
I suspected that, as well.
I mean, I see it, and you can see it sometimes. You see somebody, and it's always interesting who's going to get around first, right? So, it does happen.
Yeah.
Any other questions of staff? With that, we'll open the public hearing.
Great.
And we do have three cards, and so I would also acknowledge we received several emails and correspondence that were included in our staff report, and then one late this afternoon, right there to go, lost my organization here, from a lady that lives up there that couldn't make the meeting tonight, and is in, was not particularly in favor of the project, but from Christine Turner. And with that, I'd like to invite Ms. Barbara Hahn. Followed by Lynn Mazzarella. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Hahn. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. My daughter was the one who initiated this process. They moved in with us. They're military, and they were with us for two years. They had two small children. We have new neighbors across the street. They also have three children, so my grandkids were running across the street, back and forth, back and forth, visiting with the other kids. So, we heard a lot of the screeches. We heard the sounds of those vehicles, and it really doesn't matter what time of the day with the school, yes, it does get more, but throughout the day, we really don't have a certain time. Having those, hearing those sounds, as a grandparent, as a parent, just hearing the screeches of tires on your neighborhood street, it really does break my heart. I understand the cost, we all do. I think any one of these children on our street is worth whatever the cost is for these, and I know many of the members in our street, we even talked about fundraising, trying to get the funds for this. So, I want, would like for you to also take that into your thoughts, think about that. I did hear there that the criteria here, that 88 percent of the people signed up for this on our end of Riachuelo. And I'm not really sure, and I know he commented on it, about Lano, the street below, how this may or may not impact them. But having those people on, at my house, talking about this, the speed bumps, they did bring up, how come we didn't take in their part of the street? So, I am really appreciative of them who did come forth, fill out the paperwork, and get this in, to go the whole circle of Riachuelo. I've been here for 31 years in my home. I was an original owner. Most of the people on our street now have either moved, and now we have young families coming in. Being right next door to the elementary school, as well as the middle school, we are seeing a lot more traffic. Also now, with Cerro Montoso going all the way through and meeting Camino Del Rio, and then that new on to...
La Pata.
La Pata, the traffic has increased a lot. And when it backs up, people turn to try to find the fastest through fair, and it's our street, unfortunately. I know you asked about accidents. We have to cross the street every day to get our mail. Our mailbox is a gang box, it's across the street. Many times, when we try to go across, the cars don't stop for us. When you put your foot off the curb, they continue on. And it's unfortunate every day. This is what me and my husband have to go through. The parking is, a lot of people are parking on the street, and as he said, our street is not as wide as most streets, and we're a curve. So, having those speed bumps, I've even said, put it in front of my house. I bring it on. I'm happy for it. But being on the curve makes it even harder. We can't back out of our driveway. The cars don't stop. They're on destination fixation mode. They're going where they need to go. But I thank you for your time in offering this opportunity for us this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lynn Mazzarella? Followed by Crystal Hartson. Crystal Hartson is the last card that I have, unless somebody else wishes to speak.
Hi, I'm Lynn Mazzarella. I'm one of your statistics. My car was creamed on our street, on Richelieu. I am on the opposite side of her, on the far corner. We have, we don't have the cut-through like they do for the school. Most of the people who are racing through our neighborhood are going to the neighborhood over here, which has the speed bumps, and they're trying to miss them. Just trying to back out onto my street, this way is fine, I can at least see. This way, they come really fast. My car was actually hit out front of my house with a gentleman going over 45, which kind of irritated me, because it was a brand-new car. I am for these speed bumps, not on just one side, the whole circle. We do have people that we know on the cul-de-sac. They don't really care, because they're not affected by the speed. But getting to it, you know, that's going to be their issue. I am for this, and I hope you guys really consider it, because it is a speedway. Thank you.
Crystal Hartson? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I have, this is the last card.
Hello. So, I live here, where this blue tarp is on this house. Coming out of here, totally for the speed bumps, great idea. Coming out of here, there's a stop sign. What I would like to suggest is putting some sort of stop sign here, some sort of stop sign roundabout, something. People coming down here, coming, pulling out of here, is a blind spot. It is hard to get out of there. It's hard to see cars come through. You try to get out. There's been accidents on there. I've heard cop cars by there. My, I used to work down off Cerro Montoso. This whole section of the street was closed down, because there was an accident right there. Bad accident. So, what I would suggest, if there's a possibility of putting a stop sign, something to slow of putting a stop sign, something to slow down people that are coming from around this corner, even when I come down Veracruz to go home, it's a scary start to pull out of there sometimes. So I always wanted to just put a recommendation or a possibility of putting something to just sort of make it so it's easier to get out of there, in and out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak, comment from the public on this? Please come forward and fill out a card, please. Or fill out later. You? It's okay. Okay.
Hi, I'm Christine Turner. Thanks for having us this evening. And I live in Riachuelo.
Could you please, uh, speak closer into the microphone or pull it down to you? It is flexible. Thank you.
Okay. So, the house just at the very right-hand side of Lano is where I live. I've lived there since two thousand, raised two kids. I've been retired for the last ten years, so I'm in, at home twenty-four-seven. And the letter from the city was the very first time I heard that there was even a problem. So I'm astonished that I wasn't included. I, I know the previous gentleman had said that there was, um, you know, people in the homes that were talked to, and I know nothing about it, and neither does my two neighbors. And that's why I emailed. It was very late today. I emailed and just rushed down here. I'm Christine Turner. The email that you received. But, um, I'm, I'm very alarmed at it, you know? I don't, I don't see the need for it. I do agree that there's a need when you enter and exit Riachuelo onto Camino, uh, Cruz, especially when schools in, that is getting very fast and very dangerous because it is in our curve. But internally, within Riachuelo, it, this is all brand-new to me. I know nothing about it.
I don't know what to say. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of community outreach tried to, and a lot of people signed it. It's unfortunate that somehow we got-
Yeah, and both neighbors upside and down. You know, we just discussed it late last night, and this is the first refer-
Glad you're here.
Yeah, thank you all.
Mm-hmm. Since no more cards, then I'll close the public comment period, and we'll go into discussion on this. Um, Mr. Tally?
So, um, so as I, as I spoke earlier, um, I drive down there almost every day to drop my, my kids, two boys, off at Truman Benedict, and I guess soon Bernice Ayers ones moving up. Um, and, and so I see that traffic that, that is occurring there. Um, and I'm particularly interested in, in this type of a solution, because I see this type of speeding, since I live on a hill, and we have traffic that's going down our streets at a very fast clip. And I think they're actually probably an effective solution. The, the thing that, that I guess I, I somewhat wonder about is the public expenditure funds on this. There is a, a Homes Association, I believe, or at least it was referenced here, and, and I think I heard a comment from the public about, um, about fundraising efforts. And so I, I, I think that that's, sometimes that's probably something that, that should be explored, although I, I think being able to have kids cross the street without fear and trepidation from parents or grandparents is probably, um, something that we should be taking, um, an active role in.
Commissioner Ruin?
Yeah, it's, um, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to mess with safety, but, um, you know, we've, I think we're, we've got a lot of residents who obviously feel there's an issue, and some residents who don't. And, um, I, I don't, I don't feel, at least so far, like we've got a really kind of, um, solid direction from our traffic engineer. There's, as you said, he's following the lead of the residents, and this is kind of the solution that they had proposed. I have, I'm kind of struggling with this. Um, I, one concern I have is maybe pushing, if we put speed bumps along Riachuelo, it could push the traffic problems to other neighborhoods. And it may be one thing that this neighborhood is experiencing, it sounds like.
The other neighborhoods that have-
Oh, quick, excuse me.
Sorry, but public comments, uh, thank you very much.
So, it, what some of the residents have said is maybe that speed bumps on other neighborhoods have caused a traffic increase in their neighborhood, possibly. We don't really know that for sure. The studies need that, but, but it's a thought that I had and a concern, um, that doing this is just kind of can just push the problem out to other neighborhoods. Um, in terms of the school traffic, if there's an increase there because we've got, at the moment, just the demographics are increasing the school attendance, one thing we could do is start to talk to the school itself. We do that a lot with the high school and work out traffic flows with the high school. So that may be an option to work with them and talk about maybe how to change the, in, the drop, pickup and drop-off flow that might help the neighborhood as well. Um, and I, I, I would like to see us maybe also discuss other street diet options, as, um, as Commissioner Wu was alluding to. Because this is, this is certainly one solution. You know, it's one tool in the toolbag, but we should look and see if maybe other toolbag, tools in the toolbag might work better for this neighborhood, at least, uh, you know, until we know more and, uh, uh, you know, can, can judge. Maybe less expensive or less impactful solutions might, might do the trick for them. So I'd like, maybe we could talk about that some as well.
Let me, uh, wade in here real quickly, uh, into moderation here, but I do note that, and there's, they can tell by the percentage that, uh, you have almost seventy percent of the neighborhood here voted for some sort of traffic calming, speed, whatever. In other words, they took initiative, and, and through two different meetings now. We've had a pretty overwhelming neighborhood response. There's a few here that apparently didn't, you know, get, get the word somehow, and that's, that's unfortunate. Uh, I think these are public roads, and there's a difference between public roads and, and association roads. Some, even though there's, it's a master plan development, sometimes the roads are accepted by the city based on fire authority criteria, and some are not. And so you might have some speed humps over there in adjoining neighborhood, but it's, it's an association road. So there's different criteria for putting them in there. And so it's probably, I think, a little conjecture if we offload from one neighborhood to the other. Uh, I think, uh, this is a fairly sophisticated and low-cost, uh, solution, and I think it, it'll meet the, the needs of, of the neighborhood. We do routine, I think I've mentioned, it, this is budgeted for in the city budget. There's eighty thousand dollars in, uh, for caf- traffic calming that we approve every year, that we review in the SIP, uh, for consistency as required by state law. So this is, I don't think it's really a funding issue if they're about five hundred dollars each, which is a lot cheaper than a asphalt speed hump. And I think there's a safety criteria in there for the fire trucks to go through. I almost wish we'd put it on my street when we went through traffic calming. I've had a discussion with the traffic engineer on that, as a matter of fact. So I'm, I think I'm going to go with the neighborhood on this. I'm, I'm going to support, uh, the neighborhood. Their, the, the community has come together on this, initiated this, and, uh, that's the way we did in my neighborhood. Uh, there's, there's room in the budget for it, and it's a low-tech solution. I kind of started my career, ended up being on a planning commission, working on speed humps in the city of Lake Forest about thirty years ago, and how, how far apart they are, and how many you put into a neighborhood, and how you shape them and everything else. And so the spacing here looks good. It follows our speed hump policy, which is one of the first ordinances I worked on on the commission. So I'm going to support this, uh, this effort, because this is, uh, sixty-eight or sixty-nine percent of the neighborhood has voted for it, A, it's budgeted for, B, and I think it's a very good solution. Uh, Commissioner Wu, you had your light on and been waiting patiently. That's all I'm going to say on it for now.
Thank you. Uh, speed bump or speed, speed cushion, they're certainly a solution. Uh, and we identified a problem here, which is a cutoff traffic through a neighborhood which is not supposed to, which is not designed for the school traffic on the collector road. So, um, so overwhelmingly, residents on the south side of this loop support this idea. So I, I would go with them. But on the north side, it's a bigger loop, bigger loop, and the support, if we look at the north side of it, it's, I believe Tom said, a little over fifty percent. That overall, we have a little, no, sixty-something percent. So the support on the north side of a loop is, is, they have a majority marginally. Um, so I, I, and a cutoff traffic really doesn't go there, so. So I think for, for the solution of the, the cutoff traffic, um, speed hump or speed cushion is one way, road diet another way. Uh, there, there can be another, other solutions. For example, in the middle of the road, we can build a little, um, a little neighborhood park, just cut off the road, and leave a twenty-feet-wide filing goes, going through. And then for the rest of the road can be landscaped, and with the support of the initiative from the neighborhood. So there, there are other solutions to solve that cutoff traffic problem and, and the danger, and hazard opposed to the safety of the neighborhood here. That's all my comments.
Commissioner Grant? Mr. Park, Christopher Smith?
Well, I drove this area and drove the area around this area. There, there are some speed humps on some of the adjoining streets up there, so they, this isn't out of the blue. There's, there's a precedent that this is going on in that neighborhood. The road that, uh, Via Sage has bumps, and, uh, Via Solana had some bumps. And they're asphalt bumps, and they have a fifteen-mile-an-hour sign on them. And, uh, those roads, uh, for whatever reason, have those same things. And, and I'm thinking that, you know, I can understand why the neighbors would want to do that in, in, uh, this particular loop. I find it hard to believe that there's that kind of a traffic problem, but I wasn't there with the school. And I suspect that the school is the, the cause of all of this grief in the neighborhood. And if we could do something to mitigate the, the cut-through traffic, it would be, uh, part of the solution. I, I don't really know of too many people that really love to have speed bumps in their neighborhood. So you have to be careful what you're asking for here. You've got ten of these things, so you're going to be bouncing over these things for a long time. And, and also, it's going to cost the city probably ten or twenty thousand dollars. So it's a lot of money to, to, to fix a problem that really isn't the road itself. It's the, it's the people in the schools using the cutoff, as I can understand it. I would have liked to seen just speed bumps in the three access roads that come into the loop. Right in the middle of there, you could put a speed bump. And I think that that would, after a while, uh, dissuade people from wanting to cut through because they'd be hitting these speed bumps. And so, you know, I think that there's a more cost-effective way of doing this. Uh, but if the residents really feel strongly about it, and the statistics support it, you know, we have to kind of go on the findings of it. I, I don't particularly like that, but, uh, I think with, with what's in front of us, and the statistics, and, and the cost, and the funding, that, you know, I feel like I have to support it.
Mr. Tally? Okay, Commissioner Wackel?
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, if Tom could come up, I just have a couple of other questions, things that came into my mind a little late. Okay, so the average daily traffic, um, speeds that were a part of the traffic volume speeding survey that was done, um, can you, just getting away from the average, can you talk about those peak times? And can, do we have enough data to support the fact that these, there are higher frequencies of these sorts of, uh, trips during school hours?
Yeah, actually, um, as one of the residents explained, there's really not one time of the day where we're seeing, seeing the higher speeds. In fact, when I'm thinking about it, when it's congested, the speeds are probably actually slower. It's probably when, um, there's less traffic, when they get the random speeder, because just for that matter, when it's congested, you can't go as fast.
Okay, so what we're saying is that the speeds are lower during those school hours, those peak hours, pick-up and drop-off? Or is this more, more-
That's likely, yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, and then to answer Commissioner Ruin's point about pushing a problem to another neighborhood, we look at it holistically. And in this situation, um, putting these speed humps in won't affect an adjacent neighborhood. As was mentioned, the, the neighborhood which it does connect to already has, uh, speed humps in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Tom, did we identify in this loop of Riachuelo, what portion had the highest speeds?
It, it was the, the, the segment which we received, the petition in the beginning.
So that would be the lower-
Right, between Sarmentosa and, and, uh, and Veracruz.
Okay. Okay. So volume isn't really the issue here at all?
Yeah.
We're not concerned about people cutting through, it's just the speeds during-
I mean, that's not what we're evaluating. The residents probably don't like the, the volume, but, um, it's the speeding which we are addressing.
And these are publicly maintained streets?
They are.
Okay. Are you familiar with signage that was placed at, um, and I think there's a partial public and private situation there, but we have signage that is placed at, uh, northbound from Pico along Hermosa, heading up towards Vista del Mar, that area where those other speed bumps are that you referenced earlier, on Portofino?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Heading up that way?
I'm familiar with those signs.
Via Marfino, there's a no right turn between-
Correct, right.
Uh, it's seven-thirty and eight-thirty a.m., and two and three p.m. during-
Right.
-school days. That's been very effective in that neighborhood. I happen to know that every once in a while, there's a, a motorcycle officer that's there, kind of, and folks are always mindful of that. I'm not cutting through-
And that's what makes it, that's what makes it effective, is when the officer's there. Officers are extremely effective when they're there.
Absolutely. The signage helps remind people. So I think as a supplement, Commissioner Wu and others that would, uh, consider additional measures to, to help minimize volumes and potentially speeds to that area, that could be, uh, a nice addition to, to the package.
The challenge is, um, the, um, officer resources are, are limited, and there, there are an expensive option.
I'm thinking, uh, mostly the signage. The supplemental piece with the officer is great, and they are down there, by the way, periodically.
Right.
I do see him occasionally on Veracruz. I'm not sure about inside the, the, the school area there, but, uh, but thank you.
You're welcome. Christopher Tally?
So I, I wanted to follow up on a couple of earlier comments. One, that the school actually does do a very effective job of moving traffic in and out. I mean, they've got, uh, in, in the pickup and drop-off hours, they've got generally three or four teachers that are out there ushering traffic in and out. It's just you've got, you know, a thousand kids that are coming in and out of the school. Um, my car tells me occasionally to reroute through that neighborhood to save time. So I, I suspect that may be causing some of, uh, some of the potential transient traffic that occurs.
It's been waysed?
Well, Tesla, Tesla does a pretty good job of that. Um, and, um, you know, I, I, I don't come, so I, I now come down Veracruz to get into a right-turn lane to go into the school versus coming down Sarmentosa. And I do see people, when I'm turning left out of there, that duck into that, into that. Um, I, I, I think you've got a problem there, and, and I applaud you for working with the community to come up with a solution that, that seems to make a lot of people happy. Are we ready for-
I think we have a few more comments here.
I was, I was looking for a motion. Are you, you have more discussion here, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
From this two connecting points, a one from, uh, Caye, Sar- Sarmentosa, another one from, uh, Veracruz, uh, we have two possible ways. The, the first one is a shortcut, which most people use is to put that problem. The other one, the rest of the loop road. For our purpose, I would consider them different roads, because, no, I don't, I don't imagine many people would drive around it as a racetrack. So I would support the, the lower portion, which is shortcut one, and not the long one, because the short one has eighty-eight percent of residents support, and the north half is on, has only fifty-one percent.
Still a pretty good percentage. But Christopher Smith, you have some additional-
The, the cutoff is sixty-seven.
Well, I was going to suggest that if, uh, we could see, uh, an opportunity here to maybe revisit this as a, a solution that, that maybe is not the best. Maybe there's other more simplistic or straightforward solutions. I, I would be of the mind to reconsider the design of this and to try to come up with something that is not as evasive as ten of these bumps, and maybe look at, uh, also some things that we could do in the neighborhood that might be street, uh, speed calming. But I could see putting the three of these bumps in the, in the little feeders into the, the loop. And it would seem to me that might cut, cut the traffic down. I, I just feel that it's difficult for me to, to see this as a real problem after being there and spending so much time. And I didn't see anything in the way of speeding. In fact, that, those, those roads- In fact, those roads were really calm and slow when I was there. So I'm a little bit miffed at this, and I guess I'd rather see a smaller approach to see what could be done versus to lay out 10 of these speed bumps. So anyone in the commission is ready to take another look at it?
I think I have another comment down the other end. I would also offer that, Tom, you took data over how long a period of time?
It was a week.
A week? So we're in and out of there, kind of doing a visit for an hour or two.
With no school?
With no school. And this data was taken here at another time of the year, over a five, six day period. So we've got a lot of data here that we're looking at compared to a cursory drive-through. I just mentioned that. Would that, Mr. Ruin?
A couple of questions for you, Tom. If, how much does it cost to remove these if there's a, if the residents decide?
Yeah, and there's a, that's part of the traffic calming program. If you get over, I think it's a majority, 50, over 50% of the residents want it removed. We can remove it. I think the removal cost would be relatively inexpensive. And we would then store the cushions--
You step outside with your cell phone or go to airport mode? Thank you.
If another neighborhood was interested in using them, if you wouldn't throw them out, we'd keep them.
They're put in with big bolts, like screw bolts, isn't it?
You're right, screw them in.
And then you just screw them out and you want to take them out?
That's right.
So pretty negligible if they decide--
Right, exactly. It's pretty low removal cost.
Okay. And have you done any research on contacting people like Google Maps or, you know, Tesla mapping people or something to put corrections, like don't route people through these residential areas and make recommendations like that?
My research is that there's a really intelligent planning commissioner that's done something similar to that, and they're pretty effective.
It kind of worked with the U-Haul situation. I was just wondering if, because if people are being routed through this area, maybe part of a solution is to start having this routing software, letting the editors know, hey, this is not a good idea to route them through these neighborhoods.
Right. I think it's a good idea.
You know, it's kind of a free solution, too. It just takes a little time to contact them, so. Okay, thank you.
I think it's more local knowledge of people just trying to get to work or get kids to school, so. Can you relate, Tom, to Commissioner Tally?
Yeah. So I just want to make one comment before I make a motion, which is I normally agree with a lot of what you have to say, Commissioner. But I see this on a daily basis down there. And I know we looked at it recently when we got the packet, I drove by there. But it's probably 10% of the traffic flow that I see from August through the school session being out. And with that, I'd like to make a recommendation that we forward to the city council a recommendation to approve the proposed speed cushions on Rialcello as follows. The speed cushion design concept for 10-speed cushions on Rialcello as provided in Attachment Two. And we should also request police services to consider increasing speed enforcement in the neighborhood. And the third thing that I would add to that is a no right turn sign, as you indicated on, from Sarmentosa onto Rialcello during school hours.
For that third one, I'm a little, I would be a little uncomfortable adding it just because we haven't gotten any staff input on that particular addition. So we can certainly look at that in the future after we got some staff input on the traffic effect on that.
Do we need a finding for that? Since we're making a recommendation, not a finding?
That's right.
It's a recommendation, so between this point and council, then staff can look at it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tally. I'm sorry?
Then can I make a request? Can we bifurcate it, that third item? Because I would, I actually am going to vote in favor of this, but I'd rather not vote on something that we haven't looked into and researched yet. So if everyone wants to vote yes for the third item, that's fine, but I appreciate we could bifurcate it, otherwise I have to vote no.
How about if we, I think since we're making a recommendation, we just recommend that city council consider that.
How about we recommend that staff examine that before forwarding to the city council?
That's fine, yeah. That works for me, sure.
Are we comfortable with that?
I'm agreeing with that.
So I have a motion by Tally, second by Commissioner Crandall. The third thing, a recommendation to staff to research and promote, forward to council on the right turn signal. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed. I think with a 51% of residents on the other half of Rialcello, adding six speed bump on that is a waste of public funding.
Okay, so it passes 6-1, with Commissioner Wu opposed. Good luck with the recommendation going forward. With that, we'll move on to items. Item B, which is La Pata. And so, this is very timely because there was a very hot discussion item on this at council last night. Well, not about this road, but--
Right. Big super road.
The one that feeds into it and feeds from this one, which is Camino del Rio. And they could hardly wait to get a traffic study to, because without approving this by council, the policeman can't take enforcement on it until this is approved. So it's, you better be moving quickly on the next road, I guess, is the message. But up to you, Mr. Frank.
Great, okay. So we're bringing this back to you, the commissioners, tonight with some additional information, so I'd like to just answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions of our traffic engineer? Mr. Tally?
So, so I, thank you for responding to the email today. At the last time this was brought forward, there was some comments about the California vehicular code requiring the speed limits to be set at 85% of the ETS. And I think in the conversation and the supporting documentation that you put forward, I just want to confirm that that is not in the California vehicular code of the 85% of the engineering and traffic study. That is, in fact, in the guidelines that are promoted by Caltrans and others, but the actual code itself does not have that reference in there.
Right, that's accurate. And I don't know if the other commissioners would like to see the questions that were presented in response or anything, but would you like to share?
Yeah, so I, I'll cover--
Okay, yeah, yeah, please do.
So the first one was, because we did have some consternation on the commission about that actually being codified. The second question, and I'm going by memory here, so I apologize--
Sure, okay. And do you want a copy of your question?
Oh, yeah, that's always helpful.
Copy of your own question?
It was 5:00 this morning when it got finished.
It's our traffic engineer that brings the question?
That's right.
More if you want.
The, my second question was really relating to the earlier, which was the guidelines that you provided, which are guidelines put forward by just regulatory bodies here in California, recommend setting a speed limit near the 85th percentile. And I use the word near because I think that means you can go above and beyond.
Correct.
And just to confirm that. My other question that I had was, and I brought this up the first evening, I'm a little concerned that we placed speed limit signs on the road before we actually had speed limits established by council, right? So it's, that's the, I guess, the attorney in me that gets worried about us going out and doing things before it's been, you know, been approved or promoted. And also about the impact that that has on the traffic study. So under what authority did we actually place those speed limit signs up?
Right, it was under the authority of the city traffic engineer, which is actually not myself, per code that is defined as the city engineer and director of public works, which is Tom Bonniget. But he regularly asks my opinion.
Okay.
And we did have a lot of discussion about whether to place signs or not in this location before we actually did the speed survey. And some of the issues which we were considering at the time is, one, with Avenue La Pata, it's designed at a 70 mile an hour speed. And we were very, very concerned with 70 mile an hour traffic coming to one of our intersections on a collector street, Camino del Rio. And in fact, we recommended and the county accepted design changes to Avenue La Pata to change the characteristics of the roadway, because time and time again, you'll hear me say, it's, the speed limits don't really make a difference on how fast people travel. It's a characteristic of the roadway and, which makes people feel different. And then it's that feeling which makes them travel at a safe speed, their perceived safe speed. So Commissioner Eggleston actually mentioned when he was sitting on dais that he felt like the lanes felt different when he was approaching Camino del Rio. And in fact, they do feel different because we purposely changed the road design and we put a median at Camino del Rio to make it feel different. We put up advanced signing to show that there's a signal ahead. I was actually proposing even more extreme changes, but through negotiations, we worked out the final design. So we were very concerned with having 70 mile an hour traffic approaching that intersection and then transitioning down to a 45 mile an hour speed, because that segment of the roadway is actually designed for a lower design speed.
So following up on that--
Right. So, oh, I'm sorry, to finish that thought. So therefore, we thought it was appropriate to sign it down from the 65 mile an hour--
To slow the traffic.
Yeah, to slow, well, not to slow the traffic down, to give them notice that there's a changed condition, and they might want to consider slowing down, like in their mind. And that also enables us to set the timing for Camino del Rio as well.
So that brings me to my next point, which is the engineering and traffic study that is done is to promote or the establishment of a speed limit, right?
Right.
Which we're stating it should be around the 85th percentile, right? I think that's the commonly accepted standard, right? Of free flowing traffic.
Correct.
Right? So by putting up these signs before we've determined what the free flow of traffic is, we're kind of presupposing the outcome and, you know, changing the outcome.
Well, I wish that actually was the case. I wish we could put up a sign that said 25 miles an hour and people would do 25 miles an hour. But as you heard from the previous petition, people don't follow the signs. So you can put up a sign that says 10 miles an hour, and people are still going to probably do the 85th percentile. We hear all the time, you know, please put up a sign that says, "Slow down, children are in the neighborhood," or whatever you come up with. And if there was a sign that would effectively work, we would do it. Unfortunately, the studies don't bear that out.
Well, so I guess what I'm having problems with is reconciling this notional concept that signs don't impact, even if it's a 5%, right? That swings, that swings the percentages. I mean--
Right.
Back in my math major days and statistics that I had to go through, you know, I mean, a small percentage, and when we're talking here about, you know, 57 versus 59 miles an hour, that moves the pendulum significantly.
Right.
So I understand why we want to slow traffic down coming down Del Rio. As I indicated, I live there, I'm on the Homes Association Board, we deal with the Del Rio traffic--
Right.
Problem. I get that. But I think we do affect the outcome by what we're doing with the signage to try to slow people down. And maybe it's a moot point, but it concerns me when our obligation is to measure the free flow of traffic, that we're not measuring the free flow. I mean, maybe legal can give us opinion on what free flow of traffic really means.
You go to the traffic engineering--
Yeah.
Okay. So, and in my, I guess on the revised map that you sent to us here on a location map, so this is actually, this paints a different picture in my mind than when I saw this the first evening. Because for some reason, I was looking back through the original packet, I was thinking we had strips in the road that were measuring the speeds. I don't know.
We had tubes out to do a volume count after it opened, but that's not how we determine the speed, because the radar gun's much more accurate.
And so do we capture every vehicle with the radar gun?
We take a sampling, obviously over 30, since you're well versed in statistics. So we're up in the hundreds for our sampling. So it's a statistically valid sample.
Okay.
And we do it at a time that's typically free flowing.
The tubes do the numbers and then the radar does the speed.
The tubes actually can do speed, but it's not as accurate as a radar.
But you capture all of the traffic that's going through tubes?
During the period which we're out there, yeah. We don't skip vehicles during the period which we're doing the speed survey, we capture all the vehicles during that survey.
With the radar gun, we capture all of the vehicles?
With the radar, right.
So we've got multiple vehicles that are in a pack?
We're popping them all, right.
And how are they capturing now? Or are they sitting?
It's a radar, yeah, they're sitting, well, in different locations, obviously.
Because I'm curious.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, one, Jane Mortech is a terrific assistant traffic engineer. And when she was actually doing speed survey, when she finished, just, this is totally tangential, but she took some really beautiful pictures of wildfire, wildflowers, not the wildfire, excuse me, there's no wildfire, wildflowers out there. And so she was sitting at a viewpoint where she was able to get clear readings on the traffic on the roadway.
Okay. And I, again, applaud your slowing down traffic coming down to Del Rio. And I do find that characteristics of the road there lend themselves to doing that. I worry about the speed limit going out, right? And I worry about that for several reasons. The first reason is we're promoting an arterial solution to, an alternative to the toll road, which I believe the city's taking a position on with that. I use that road all the time. Setting it at 50 miles an hour feels slow. And it makes me want to travel faster. And it gives people justification to want to travel faster. And I want to remove justification for people to want to pay to travel faster. Is it appropriate to look at setting that speed limit higher because you don't have people coming into the city versus you have egress? It's then transitioning to a 65 mile per hour zone, you know, shortly over at the county line.
Yeah, we don't bifurcate the sections, so we don't change the speed limit in different directions for the speeds that--
Why not?
I, you know, I can't guarantee you that it's, you know, per design guideline, but I believe it is, because I've never seen it done throughout the whole city.
We've always resisted that. The data's shown us sometime to bifurcate, and we've always re-normalized. We had some stuff on Frontier a couple of years ago that the data showed 25 in one way and 35 the other, and you shouldn't do that.
And what I cannot--
It's inconsistent for the people.
Yeah, it's consistency. And I've seen it also, the same discussion on Avenue de Vista Hermosa, so I'm fairly confident that there's very good reasons, possibly recommend in state law and the state guidelines to not do that. But regarding your feeling that it's slow, there's a guidance sign, cautionary sign for 40 miles an hour along the turn going up towards pedestrian bridge. And then further, I can tell you, from what I've seen and from the police officers, they're typically stationed, at least since it's been opened, to monitor the speeds coming into the city, not leaving the city.
Well, I appreciate that, except I'll be the one that gets, you know, ticket, right? So I understand we need not, or I guess I understand why we may not have wanted to bifurcate traffic internal to the city, but here we've got an egress situation and an ingress situation. And coming in, we have a compelling, you know, kind of city interest in slowing traffic down.
Right.
Because we want to slow it down because we have an off-road. Here we have, for lack of a better word, a highway that's going out and our--
Maybe this may help you. It's currently signed at 50, and the 85th percentile is 58. So clearly, people are not going 50. So maybe that helps you.
I mean, it does.
You're one of the 58, I guess.
Well, probably, you know, I mean, I feel like that's a 60 mile an hour road, and it goes to 65, and then it drops down to 60--
There's people going over 60. Right. So my earlier point stands, the signs don't really have an impact on the speed which people are traveling. It's, if we sign this 50 or 55, it's probably not going to make a difference, the speed which people travel on that roadway.
So would you, why wouldn't you want to sign at 60?
Because I want people to take notice that heading southbound, that they're approaching a road segment with different characteristics. And I want that transition from this possibly 65 miles an hour on the rest of the roadway to start slowing down as it's entering that intersection and then transitioning into the 45 mile an hour speed limit.
I agree with that.
And actually, there's also certain criteria for lowering speed limits. You can only lower it like so many, like so many miles per hour per distance.
I think you missed something. I'm talking about the egress.
No, I get it, I get it. But I guess--
Egress, I agree. I'm not, I don't dispute the speed limits that you're proposing on egress.
Right.
I'm talking about egress.
Right.
Why wouldn't we want to set that at 60, because you're not controlling traffic coming in?
Because we can't bifurcate it.
But nobody's told me why we can't.
Well, I'll follow up. Before this goes to city council, I'll send you a clear explanation on why we can't bifurcate.
Can we hold this for a little bit? Commissioner Wu has been patiently waiting over here on this issue.
Commissioner Tally, I think I read something that says that if you have different alignment, you can have different speed limit. Because it's two directions share the same alignment, so the speed-- Because if two directions share the same alignment, so the speed limit in different direction needs to be the same. I think I read that somewhere in the material.
Right. And I wish I had that for you. And I will get it for you and I'll send it to you before we go to City Council.
Tom, I have a question for you. So on the traffic engineer, highly specialized things, we have to rely on your professional judgment. Do you believe that the traffic survey study outcome would be the exact same if the speed limit were not opposed at all?
Exact is a pretty exact word. I'd say it'd be very close to what it was and there'd probably be no difference in the outcome.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this? I think it's, I'll make a motion if...
Okay.
Do we need, oh, I beg your pardon. Excuse me. Any other questions of staff? Do we have any cards for public comment?
Yes.
Then we'll close public comment. And I guess we've sort of been in discussion or we've had questions, or do we need to discuss, I should say? Then Mr. Wu and Mr. Wu.
I have my one discussion.
Do you have more? Okay, you wanted to discuss.
Yeah, just one comment. I think that setting the speed limit on the egress portion of this at 50 miles an hour provides justification for a toll road to come through on alignment number 14. And I think we're making a mistake by not setting that at 60 miles an hour.
And why does that provide encouragement for a toll road?
Because we have a slower traffic solution than what might be provided by an arterial solution.
Well, that's not really the situation that's before us tonight, which is, we're not talking about toll roads or arterials here. We're talking about the speed limits set on this road based on the traffic engineering study and the data and the traffic counts and the speed counts that are taken per the code and per the worksheet.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting point. I'm just thinking, we can always change it if we have to, right? If that's, if...
We have an engineering and traffic.
Right. If we have more...
We have an engineering and traffic study that paints the 85th percentile at 57 miles per hour. We have the opportunity to set it at 60, at 55, or 50. We set it at the slowest rate.
No, I mean, I got what you're saying. I just, I don't, I guess I don't see it. I don't see the connection enough to see if there's a danger there. But I understand the concern.
Before Jim, you make your motion, would you be comfortable having the city engineer at least present your comments to City Council when he makes his presentation on the road?
Oh, I think so. I would, and I may show up to prove as a member of the...
Because we could make that part of a recommendation that, at least that be presented. It's not necessarily a recommendation that they do it.
I think it's a minority...
At least that information's given to them.
I think it's a minority opinion of one person.
I'd probably include it in minutes. Probably more effective if the commissioner himself speaks.
Yeah, I'm sure Ms. White has captured this discussion. Okay. Okay. Mr. Wu.
Then I will move that we forward to the City Council, a recommendation to approve the establishment of speed limit based on the engineering and traffic survey on Avenida La Pata.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Wu and a second by Mr. Wu. All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that the traffic...
Just a minute, hold it. We have a motion, you want to rescind this motion and come back to amend here?
No, I want to make a motion to amend a motion on the floor, which I believe I'm entitled to do.
Which can be a separate motion.
Nope, it's an amendment, it's not a substitute.
You want a motion to amend, what's your motion?
The recommendation that the traffic egress in the city be set at 55 miles per hour instead of 50.
Did you say 50, 55?
I said 55.
So you have a second? Okay.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Okay, so there's an amendment on the board here to amend the outbound traffic speed from 50 to 55. There's an amended motion. We have a motion in a second. Do I vote in favor?
I'd like to discuss the motion.
Okay, let's discuss the motion.
Do we know, has City Council said that no bifurcating the speeds on roads? Is that...
I haven't seen it, honestly. And there is discussion.
Is that in the code?
Not to my knowledge, but really, the best person to answer that question is the traffic engineer.
Right. And I can't tell you that I've exhausted all resources. I don't want to say definitely, so that's why I'm saying I'm going to get back to you before City Council. But what I can, what I will do is I'll include the discussion in the City Council Agenda Report, because if you remember, you're making a recommendation to City Council. So I'll include this discussion in the Agenda Report that I take to City Council.
Commissioner Tally, I have an answer for you. This is in California Manual for Setting Speed Limit, page 39. I read it for you. 3.4.2 Directional Differences. The 85th percentile speeds may differ considerably by direction at some locations. Such conditions are usually caused by relatively heavy development on one side of the road. Next to the development, motorists will tend to drive slower. On divided highways with independent alignments, the zone speeds should conform to the 85th percentile speed in each direction, even though this may require zoning for different speeds in opposite directions.
Exactly why I think we should set it at 50.
Let me continue. On undivided roadways and divided roadways without independent alignments, the zones in opposite directions should be the same for clarity for the driver and law enforcement purposes. If there is a difference between the 85th percentile speeds of 5 miles per hour or more in the opposing directions, the data from both directions can be averaged to obtain one 85th percentile. Or the higher 85th percentile may be used to set the limit.
Well, there's a vehicle.
So it sits there and says, okay, you should...
Because this road, as I understand it, is not a divided, they don't have independent alignment. They share, the two directions share the same alignment, so the speed limit should be the same on both directions.
Right. That's correct.
That's a good point. Okay. So Mr. Wu, you want to say something on discussion here?
Yeah, and regarding the amendment, I think that that's, you know, that's a good point. Let me clarify, you're, am I correct that your main concern is dealing with a toll road?
No, my main concern is I think we're setting the speed limit artificially low, lower than the 85th percentile, because 55 is already lower than the 85th percentile. 57th percentile is 57 miles per hour on the Avenida La Pata from Comino del Rio to the County of Orange limit line.
And if it is artificially low, I'm not sure if it is or not, but if it is, why is that bad?
Well, because according to what we just heard from Commissioner Wu, the guidelines, right, not the law, but the guidelines state that it should be set at or near the 85th percentile. The 85th percentile, according to the traffic study, was 57 miles per hour. And we're setting it at 55. Or I'm proposing an amendment that we set it at 55. And I would, I would offer to amend my, slightly amend the language, which is, I would state bifurcating the speed limit if it is so allowed by state law or city or state law.
I'd like to make a point here that also in the regulations, the options that were discussed, the engineer, the certified traffic engineer expert can also go and decrement it down another five miles an hour based on other factors of consideration such as bicycle lanes and trails, which this road has. And so when I looked at the speed differential, you went from 57 to 55, you took the option two and went to 50 because that's a bicycle path, it's part of our bicycle master plan. So there's a Class 2 trail on each side of the road going out there. So that, to me, was a reasonable prudent extra measure to take to drop it down since you're going to a high school out there. We've already had a near fatality on that road after it was open anyway, coming the other direction on the county side.
And it's a fatality.
Huh?
There's two people hit and one was a fatality.
Yeah.
So would it be also fair to say that setting the speed limit to what you recommend gives us more, a better law enforcement tool than setting it higher?
I think a good read for the commission would be Section 1.2 in its entirety. It's not very long, but it basically, it's, the speed limit itself is basically a tool to the drivers to give them a reference of what the appropriate speed limit is. Whether we sign it at 50 or 55, it's not going to have a dramatic impact. The purpose why I lowered it, as Commissioner Brown said, is there's extenuating circumstances with the bike trails, the approaching intersection, that I really wanted the drivers to think about their speed approaching that area. And then it's also transitioning to the lower speed limit.
Yeah.
So that's why I thought it was appropriate to recommend a 50 mile an hour limit for that segment.
I throw it everywhere down here. We're in discussion on the amendment. Do you have something to add on the amendment? You had a very good point in what you read.
Well, I think I want to fully explain that there are a few issues here. First, the directional difference, which we already addressed. Secondly, the effect of the posted speed limit to the survey, it's a little bit counterintuitive, but many things in the world, they are counterintuitive. So I would accept Tom's explanation that it is decided by the situation, by the real road, not by the speed sign. I have to believe in that.
Thank you.
And then the third one is that the city engineer has the liberty or discretion to lower it by five, and there are some justifications here. And I would accept those justifications.
I do, too. Mr. Smith, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, a simple question. La Pata, when it crosses the city limit line going north, what's the speed limit there?
They're doing a speed survey right now. They actually posted their speed limit sign in the wrong spot.
There's no speed limit on the northerly side of what we're doing.
Far northerly side, it was signed at 55. And now they're doing a speed survey and...
The county?
Yeah, the county, excuse me. The county's doing a speed survey and they put 65 mile an hour signs out there. 65 mile per hour.
65, so you would, you were proposing that we'll be going 50 miles an hour until we hit the city limit and then it's going to go to 65?
I don't know what it's going to go to. The survey, I haven't heard the results of the survey.
We don't know it's going to go to 65.
They put a sign there, but they're still doing the survey.
It could likely be between 55 and 65, somewhere between there.
Okay.
Because it was signed...
Right now, it's 65.
So most likely, it would probably not be any higher than 55.
Likely not, but it could, actually, no, I can't say that. It could be 65. It could remain at 65. That's the state, that's the state's speed limit, unless if we do an engineering survey and justify a lower speed limit.
We don't know yet.
No.
We don't know.
Okay, so let's get back into the box here. We have an amended amendment to the amendment. And so, and that amendment was to increase the speed to 55.
On the northbound.
On the northbound, but we have information from the, the way the road is, we shouldn't bifurcate. So I guess we need a vote on your amended amendment.
I'll call the question.
We have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Tally to amend the outbound speed, which would now also affect the inbound speed, which...
No, my amendment strictly to affect...
Well, okay, then we have other things. And then we have a second by Commissioner Tally. By Blackwell, I'm sorry, first by Tally. For 55 miles an hour on the outbound line. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Who's opposed to the amendment, the amended thing?
I'm...
Are you for 55 outbound or not? Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, are you opposed to 55 outbound?
Yes.
You do not support it.
That's right.
Mr. Wu, you do not support it?
It fails. I do not support a rating in a public...
That's fine.
I do not support the amendment.
I do not. You do not. Amendment to the amendment fails. 5-2. Now, Mr. Wu.
So I made the motion, it's a second?
We had a motion by Mr. Wu and a second by Commissioner Wu to forward to the City Council, the amendment as proposed by the city traffic engineer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it passes 5, passes 5-2 with Commissioner Tally and Blackwell opposed. Are we in good grounds in all this and we have everything tallied up for Mr. Tally?
I had that study session.
Okay. With that, we're going to go into recess for about 10 minutes and take a stretch and we'll reconvene at 8:00 until 4:00.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I leave.[302.58]
...the southwest portion of a 1,570 square foot residence. 509 feet would be at street level and 448 square feet would be added as a second floor level. The existing 188 square foot deck would be refurbished. Overall, the project expands the home from 1,570 square feet to 1,938 square feet, giving 368 square feet of additional living area. The project also requires a minor exception for the side yard setback, which I will discuss The residence is on the city's historic structures list. The original 981 square foot, single-story house was built in 1927, designed in Spanish colonial revival-style architecture. In 1958, a second-story addition was built above the garage. In 2001, an historic preservation property agreement was approved with one requirement: to modify the garage to be more compatible with the original structure. This improvement was not completed. The project was reviewed by the Cultural Heritage Subcommittee on three occasions. First, on February 15th, as shown on the upper portion of the slide. Subsequently, the project was revised based on Subcommittee comments, and on April 12th, the project was again reviewed. On May 10th, another revised project proposal was reviewed based on Subcommittee comments from April 12th. The Subcommittee supported the April 12th version of the project. This slide is included to show the extent of the proposed second-story addition as compared to what exists today. As previously mentioned, a minor exception permit is required for this project. Code allows minor exceptions up to a 20% reduction of the required side yard setback. Staff supports this request because it's within the permitted reduction allowance of 20%. The lot is small and fairly narrow, and there is no increased impact to the adjacent neighbors. The project is surrounded by two, three, and four-level structures. The numbers in this slide indicate the numbers of levels, the number of levels each building contains. The red asterisk denotes three historical structures. Staff believes the project provides high-quality architecture consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The project complies with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and design guidelines, and conforms with the Secretary of Interior standards for treatment of historic properties. Secretary of Interior standards for consistency, as detailed in the staff report, require that the new addition be differentiated from the historic portion of the home, that the alterations do not destroy historic materials that characterize the property, and that the new work contains compatible materials, features, scale, and massing. Staff believes this project meets the intent of these standards for historic preservation while considering integration of modern-day uses. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Cultural Heritage Permit 16434 and Minor Exception Permit 17144, subject to conditions of approval contained in the associated I would like to bring to the Commission's attention that the rear rendering of the residence shown in the staff report was incorrect. That rendering was from version one, reviewed on February 12th. However, plans that were distributed are the correct version. The version in the slide should have been the one included in the staff report. I apologize for that error. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions. The applicant and architect are also here and available for questions this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you have your line on.
Yeah, if you could go back to the slides that showed the various changes, and then one of them called was an approved elevation.
Existing versus proposed?
Go back to the next one. Okay, the version "supported," what does that mean?
They reviewed the project three times. So, they reviewed it on February 12th, and then on February, February and then April, February 15th, April 12th, and May 10th. At the May 10th review, they decided that they preferred the April 12th version, which was the second version.
But that's not what we're looking at now, though.
It is. April 12th version.
Well, then my sketches in my book are wrong, I guess. I don't show it. I show it more like the 10th. And when I have exhibit front perspective view, I don't have that one that says April 12th.
Nope.
Mine looks like the... Mine looks like the...
Am I looking at the wrong stuff, or...
No, you're looking at the... This is the "supported" part of the design review.
This was?
Yes. Well, it was two to one, so...
So, it's not that version. It's not April 12th. It's this one.
Yes, the 10th.
It's the 10th.
This is the one that's supported.
Okay. So, we're saying that it's going to look like May the 10th, not April the 12th, right?
Wait a minute. The roof?
Okay, because you confused me there.
No, you caught that one. No, the roof is different.
Big difference.
May 10th is supported.
I want the...
So, we're looking at an elevation that would be May the 10th, which is covetatic with what's in our handouts, right?
In the full-size set of plans that you received, it should have the April 12th version of the development.
Correct.
No, it doesn't.
No, it has the 10th.
Has the 10th.
I think they're reversed on the slide.
Can I help clarify?
If you're going to, you all need to come up here.
It wasn't there, so it's hard to read.
You can come up to the podium if the chair allows it, but...
Who's this wants to approach? Who's this wants to approach the Commission?
This is the applicant.
Huh?
The applicant, the owner.
The applicant?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just trying to help clarify. So, what happened was that what's labeled here as May 10th, we presented on April 12th. We presented what's listed as April 12th on May 10th, however, the committee preferred the previous version. So, it's just those names should be shifted. The proposal that the Design Review Committee preferred was the top version.
Okay.
And that should be what your plans are.
So, that's what's being proposed now. Okay, just wanted to make it clear.
Thank you. I apologize.
We're good.
I see something there.
Mr. Wu, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to take a look at the black and white photos. First time I see it. On the first page, is this the very original one?
No.
Okay, so this was built in 1927.
27.
Then about 30 years later, they demolished that, or maybe they changed it, but add a little second story to that. They were changing it again. Okay.
Yeah. This is basically what happened. They moved the garage.
It was designated historical after the second addition was added.
Okay. Commissioner Wu, you have a question?
Yeah, actually, my question is still along those lines. I think it might be answered now, but I was a little confused. The garage is part of the original historic structure?
Yes, it is.
So, that garage itself, that wasn't added on? Okay.
Correct.
Well, I think it's...
No, no. The current garage is not part of the historic.
The current garage was moved over in '58. Now, it's going to be moved back.
So, originally, there was a garage with the historic structure?
Right.
Yes.
And we're looking to restore the existing garage to what that was?
Door location. Door location near to where...
But not the rest of... But it's still going to be a larger garage. It's going to be a different building.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Go ahead.
I'm getting confused again. Go back to that black and white photograph. All right, so that's what the building looked like in 1927, right?
Yes.
And then in 1995, oh, excuse me, in 1958, a little second-story addition was added, which is the way it is now. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then at that point with that addition, it was then made an historical building.
Yes.
So, it's historical based on that drawing, not the one-story garage thing, the original black and white photograph, right?
Correct.
That one.
Mm-hmm.
With the second-story addition on it.
Just to clarify, you can still have a historic structure be historic even with an addition on it, because the majority, all the character-defining features were still there from when it was originally done in 1927. So, although there was an addition, that you can see on this one, it still rendered the home a historic home.
Well, it was actually designated after that was added, according to the state.
It is designated after, but it doesn't diminish the historic integrity of the home itself. Yeah.
Right. Still part of the worksheet. All right, I'm still a little confused. Even though there had been changes made, the structure was denoted as a historic structure. Does that mean that this, the original structure, is what was denoted as historic? Or is it as the structure stood at the time, which is with a different garage, and that extra bit to it?
I think it means the garage addition is not a contributing feature of the historic structure.
Okay, do we know that?
It's itemized in the description, the historic description that's in the package.
Right, so it's not a character-defining feature?
No.
So, anything having to do with a garage is not really part of the historic perspective?
When I look at the attachment seven, which is the worksheet, it does look like it is.
I think the architect should speak to that. We have long sketches, but designer didn't have that.
Okay, Mr. Talley, you have a question?
I just wanted to follow up on that, that you can have a historic structure that has a nonhistoric element to it, correct? So, that shouldn't play into determining the... Moving that around doesn't alter the historic nature of the structure that we're attempting to preserve. Is that a fair statement?
What I would refer you to is the Historic Resource Inventory Sheets. That does identify that the addition is not a historic portion of the building, and clearly goes into the character-defining features of what the historic portion of the building is.
And so, to follow up on that, the Secretary of Interior standards require that you not significantly alter, I believe, the historic component or the historic structure. And we have a very clear guideline, or we have a clear roadmap as to what part of this structure was historic in nature. Is that...
That's correct.
And we're not touching that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
Okay, one more time. That's the design in 1927.
Yes.
Later, a change in the garage and a second story was added, correct?
Yes.
1958.
Correct.
And then in 1995, it was then designated historical.
However, the area, during that HPPA review, a condition was placed on the property that the area of the garage addition, especially the roof, shall be modified in a manner to be more compatible with the historic character of the home. So, they clearly weren't happy with that area of the modification, and they want it restored closer to the original structure. So...
That's really confusing.
Let me jump in here real quick. Just changing the portion of the garage area, which is not part of the historical structure, in reality can change the character of a piece of property, a historic piece of property, if it's something unsightly. So, you can't say that anything you do there can't impact it, but you'd need to be sensitive to it.
That's correct. The Secretary of Interior guidelines, in fact, mentioned that. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? At this time, would the applicant like to come forward and make any statements?
Okay. I'll skip over some of this, because some of these questions are already answered by Vanessa. I'm the applicant, a full-time resident and the owner of 404 Monterey Lane. We are all here tonight with the same goal: to preserve 404 Monterey Lane. I fell in love with Monterey Lane the moment I stepped inside in October of 2015. I am committed to restoring and preserving this historic home. That being said, the current home with only one bathroom and two bedrooms is growing increasingly cramped for my family of four. For Christmas, our nine-year-old asked Santa for a permit from the city so she could stop sharing a room with her six-year-old brother. That is the truth.
That is an unusual request.
He did not grant it, unfortunately, for all of us. I believe the members of the Design Review Subcommittee would, as well as Cliff Jones, Jim Petches, and John Champa, all of whom I've worked with on this project, would agree that I've been very cooperative throughout the process. I've worked with six different contacts at the city to develop a plan to restore this home in a way that works both, hopefully, for the city and also my family. I have spent close to $15,000 in architectural drawing fees to come up with the various sketches you guys have reviewed today. A little bit of background: I purchased this home with an understanding, per Vanessa's note, that the garage roof was not aesthetically compliant and needed modification. I believe that it would be possible to address this nonconformity while adding a bedroom and a bathroom. I would not have purchased this home if I didn't think this was feasible. My Mills Act agreement stipulates that modifications may include a roof deck or square-footage additions. The previous owner's Mills Act stated that improvements were needed to the garage area and that how to fix this was, quote, "purposefully nonspecific," to allow flexibility, including a deck above the garage or extending additional living areas over the garage. The plan before you today extends the living area over the garage with the exact same garage and second-story setback you see at the house if you were to drive by today. The initial request to modify the garage was filed in 2001 with the previous owner, and despite being a Mills Act beneficiary for 14 years, no changes were made. I have lived here for less than two years and have spent half of that time working with the city to work to address this nonconformity. We chose to focus our project on the garage area because, as we discussed, this area needed to be changed per our Mills Act, and additionally, it is not an original part of the home. The entire garage structure you see today was constructed in 1958. Our current plan leaves all of the original house intact. Our original proposal presented to John Champa in October 2016 cantilevered the second story of the garage past the existing garage today by four feet. Given what I now know about owning and modifying an Ole Hansen, my first plan seems foolish even to me. However, our subsequent plans, with three versions presented to the DRSC and two versions previously presented to staff, were carefully crafted to address the concerns of the DRSC and other city staff. I'd like to summarize some of the changes we have made throughout the nine-month process. We moved the garage door back to its original location adjacent to the house to both preserve the historic pepper tree and to comply with standard nine of the Secretary of Interior that stipulates additions should be completely removable. We pushed the garage door back four feet to accommodate an 18-foot uncovered parking spot, which our house currently does not have. We removed the cantilever and pushed our second story back four feet to where today's existing second story begins, to comply with standard nine and to create subservience to the original resource. We pushed our project out in the back four feet, which encroaches on our small peek-of-view. We developed plans, testing out multiple roof options: a front gable, a side gable, a hipped roof, in addition to the two roof versions you see before you today, all in an effort to minimize the project's massing impact and to also comply with standard nine. The roof on today's plan is two feet, four inches higher than the existing roof, with one incremental foot dedicated to making the garage ceiling to code height. These changes took time and had costs associated with them, but I was and remain eager to meet this group's expectation and to work to preserve this home in a way that the city and I feel good about. I'd also like to mention that this project involves numerous essential investments to restore the home for the long term. As noted previously, the previous owner benefited from 14 years of tax breaks, but unfortunately, little of this money seems to have been put into home maintenance. The house has significant needs for repair, and fortunately, it now has an owner that is eager to make them. We will be investing $75,000 in structural repairs, including restoring the front foundation, which has shifted, is cracked, and leaks groundwater into the basement. We also plan to modernize the electrical by replacing the current knob and tube. The deck has significant termite damage. We will restore the original dining room window, which has both water and termite damage. And the current garage structure, which is not structurally sound, is not standard code height, has significant leaking issues, including now the development of black mold, and has two several wide cracks in the walls. All of these will be addressed. Needless to say, we have become quite adept at trapping rodents. I appreciate all of the time and effort of the DRSC and the City of San Clemente. The proposal you see before you today is my architect Christine Sprogg, the DRSC, and my family's best effort to adhere to the appropriate guidelines, to make this house work for my family for the long term, and to do both these things in a way that would make Ole Hansen proud. No aspect of the original Ole Hansen home is being touched. Instead, the expansion of this home to suit a modern-day family preserves Ole's original work and leaves it front and center to ensure it is the prominent focal point of the property. This original work will be largely what is visible when driving west on the one-way street of Monterey. I think Ole Hansen would be glad to have owners that are eager to preserve his unique style and to make his home their family's long-term home. I ask for the Commission's support in moving forward with this project so that we can restore some areas in desperate need of maintenance and to expand the house to meet our family's pressing need for more space.
Anybody have a question of the applicant? I do.
Sure.
Have you read and do you understand all 35 of the conditions that have been posed in the staff briefing tonight? Do you understand them all or have any questions on it?
Vanessa's report, you mean?
These are the conditions of approval that are in our package tonight that we're going to be voting on if we're to approve. There are 35 of them.
Yeah, well, I've read through them. I can't say I probably understand them to the extent you all do, but...
Okay, so you have read through them and understand you'll be required to comply with them?
Yes.
And I would encourage you to get with staff, if we were to approve this thing, to, in fact, go over it line by line, so you really do understand it.
Okay. I'm happy to do that.
So, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Yes, I have a... Attachment eight, historic property improvements to be completed during initial 10-year term of agreement. That is the agreement between the City of San Clemente with the previous owner, right? Are you also on an agreement with similar language with the city?
Yes.
Yes. When did that start?
When I purchased the home, which would have been in December of 2015. And the My Mills Act agreement gave me one year to address the roof, and we tried to hit that one year. We just haven't gotten through all the approvals yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you are... Part of execute your current Mills agreement with the city as we speak. Thank you for your input. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I'll now open the public comment. I'd like to acknowledge in our staff briefing, we do have a letter from Mr. Larry Culberson of early part of May, and we also had additional letter we received on the DIAS electronically this afternoon and on the DIAS tonight. With that, I have four cards, one of which is Ms. Silk, but I assume I gave you the applicant's shot on that, so we don't need to limit you to three minutes. Mr. Culberson, please step forward. Give us your best.
Larry Culberson, resident. You've been provided with three typed written pages in two different letters from me explaining why this project does not comply with the findings necessary for you to grant approval. Could you put up the rendering, the one that said "questions"? Those pages explain how this project does not comply with the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. The standards are very clear. We are to avoid alteration of the character-defining features and spatial relationships that characterize the property. The standards are also very clear with respect to additions. They must be compatible with the features, size, scale, and proportion, and massing to protect the integrity of the property. This property does not even come close to compliance with those standards. Just look at it. The addition is larger than the house and on virtually the same front plane. Additions are not supposed to reduce the prominence of the historic resource. The eye is drawn first to the two-story house on the left, and then you notice that there's a historic house added to it. The importance of the historic home deserves better treatment than this. I've called your attention on several occasions the fact that alterations such as the one before you tonight have resulted in the downgrading of the integrity rating of numerous San Clemente historic resources. 404 Monterey Lane currently has a National Register Status Code rating of 3D. That means it is eligible as a contributor to a National Register Historic District. Many of our resources were downgraded to a 5D due to significant additions or alterations. This means that they are no longer considered to be eligible as a contributor to a National Historic District, a National Register Historic District, only a local one. This project should have been vetted by an independent historic preservation expert. As far as I know, no one in the planning department or on the commission has been formally trained in historic preservation and has not, doesn't have experience in the field. Excuse me if I'm wrong. Our historic resources deserve such expert scrutiny to ensure the preservation of their integrity. This project is probably at least a $100,000 addition to a million-dollar house. A $1,000 consultant fee to an expert, historic preservation expert, would be a small price to pay to protect this resource. I would not be able to argue with such an expert. I would probably be a supporter then. Every time we allow another historic resource to be drastically altered, we are taking something precious and valuable away from our heritage. I implore you tonight to vote for preservation. That's the city's stated goal, and it must be yours too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culberson. Next is Mary Ann Combs. And followed by the last card of the evening, Randy Meach.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Combs, and I'm going to say that I'm a board member of the Historical Society in town with Larry. Larry is our guy that he's here all the time and watching to make sure that these historical properties are taken care of. And the Historical Society owes a big debt to Larry for doing all the work that he does and the passion that we all have for these properties. I'm going to say, I'm just going to read a little thing. This is from your package, and it's a survey from the Historic Resources Survey, and that was in 1995. It was done. It says, "This one-story Spanish-style home is not only a representative example of residential architecture in the Spanish Village, but also was an oft-published showplace of the young community. As conceived by Ole Hansen, San Clemente was to be improved exclusively with white stucco buildings topped by red clay tile roofs. Hansen was the most articulate spokesman for his ideals, but he was helped in his sales efforts by the original owner of this house, Leonard Natkember. He variously referred to as judge and professor. He was also worked for Hansen organization." Anyway, this house being built in 1927, this house was pictured in most of the sales brochures, which promoted San Clemente in the late 1920s. So, it's really a super-duper property. I mean, one of the primo properties that we have in San Clemente. And to add a large, massive addition to the side of it, it just is going to take away from the property. If you want to put it to the back where you can't see it, that's okay. I don't have a problem with that. But not on the side of it where it distracts from the house. You wouldn't put a second story on the Casa Romana. People would have fits, wouldn't they? This house was built the same year as the Casa Romana was built. So, we need to take care of our historic structures in town. It's giving us more value for the community. People love it. So, please do the right thing and not approve what's on here.
Thank you. Mr. Randy Meach.
Okay, hello, Commission. Randy Meach, I'm going to bring a perspective as a neighbor. I live, if you looked at maybe the second or third slide, I'm the neighbor with the big, tall, four-unit building. So, I look, I guess... big, tall, four-unit building, so I look, I guess, east away from the pier to 404. I'm actually at 406, so literally next door. The historical pepper tree is mine, so I am intimately interested in what's happening here. My wife and I, who's here as well. Here's what's been there for the last several years. I think somebody, maybe Barbara, mentioned fourteen-plus years. It has been a historical building, but it has never looked historical because the way it's been taken care of. The garage is falling apart. The roof, well, here, doesn't match the Ole Hanson roof. It's tin, painted, okay? The garage I'm referring to is here. Terrible shape. Excuse me, just to check my notes here. It's been neglected, the front, the backyard especially, has been neglected for years. Five-plus, I've heard, fourteen-plus. It's been a VRBO. It's been a short-term lease. About a couple of years ago, it was about a year lease. Still neglected, no money at all. We bought our house for, let me tell you, twice as much as what they bought. So obviously, we're not real pleased about what was going on there. Enter Barbara, and the enthusiasm is what she displayed today about restoring this valuable home, okay? As you can hear my voice, I am for this project, and here's why. Here's a family that's willing to bring it out of the ashes and restore it, which costs a lot of money. If they went somewhere else, it would have been kind of a turnkey place. They had that choice, but they did not choose that choice. They chose an Ole Hanson choice, which I commend them. But it cannot continue the way it was happening. If the Historical Society or anybody else had an issue and thought that that was a historical place and it was the pearl of San Clemente, then why after fourteen, fifteen years, somebody didn't come to them and tell that original owner of the last fourteen years that they need to step it up? And that's my question. But moving on, now we have somebody that's willing to put in seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand, whatever the case is, the enthusiasm and the commitment is there, and I'm all for it because I am next door and I appreciate Ole Hanson houses. My time's up, I'm sorry, but I think Barbara mentioned it very eloquently. The family is going to not only enhance it and be sensitive to the Ole Hanson house, which I am for, but they will also maintain it over the next years as a young family. So we have somebody there that's going to maintain it fourteen, fifteen, twenty, thirty years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Brandon Kelmer.
Hello. Hey, guys, I'll try to be quick. It seems to me that the biggest question here is massing. That's the biggest objection regarding the Secretary of Interior Standards. Does the new addition comply with, you know, requirements to not show massing versus the original structure? I would say a couple of things. One is, just in looking back at some of the decisions this planning commission has made in the past from a precedent standpoint, in October of 2014, the comparison was made, would you allow a second story to be built on a Casa Romantica? In October of 2014, the Price residence at 135 Avenue de Florencia, which was a historic home of a similar nature, was approved to have a second story built on it. In May of 15, the McElvein residence at 209 Avenida de La Cuesta was approved, a very similar situation. There was an addition that was made years after the original structure. There was an approval made to both raise the roof on the addition to the original structure to make it more aesthetically pleasing and also add an addition in front of the kitchen to provide more square footage for the family. To me, there's some really great precedent for this project to happen. I'd also say that in the course of the design review with the reviews with the Design Review Committee, there was an addition that was proposed that only increased the height of the project by one and a half feet, and that was ultimately decided against because it didn't match the aesthetic footprint, the parallel lines of the gable that currently exist. So, you know, part of the reason that the roof sticks up another foot and a half is mainly to be in line with the original Ole Hanson house. So, you know, if massing is truly an issue, there was a previous version that was a foot and a half smaller that I believe the applicant would be happy to go with. But, you know, either way, it seems like there's a lot of double standards here, and this is something that could be good for the community, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a few more things.
No, I think you've already had your time, but thank you.
I want to just...
Anyway, so we'll now close the public hearing and enter into discussion. To, I'd like to start the question here with the head of the Design Review Subcommittee to give me, would you give us your overall flavors? This project move through the Design Review?
We spent a lot of time on this project, and it was an extremely complicated project, although you wouldn't think so looking at it. I'm going to give you a quick update on the Mills Act. The Mills Act is an incentive program that the city has to work with a property owner to improve their property and maintain their historic resource, and in return, they get a tax reduction, a property tax reduction. That is a contract that is signed by both parties, and it is recorded against the property and runs with the property, not necessarily the owner alone. If we were to look at this project in Design Review, had there not been a Mills Act and not an addition, you know, our goal, and Larry's always good about this, you know, go back to the original if you can, but that's not the situation we're in. A previous city council, this previous planning commission, a previous Design Review Committee, previous city planner, excuse me, city manager, all reviewed the Mills Act agreement and went into a contract with the property and the property owner, and they only had one condition, and it is the area of the garage addition, especially the roof, shall be modified in a manner so as to be more compatible with the historic character of the home. Modifications may include a roof deck, square footage additions, or similar solutions. And that's exactly what the applicant is proposing, by not touching the historic resource, staying on the garage addition. We had a split vote on which elevation to select at Design Review. The one that got the majority vote has the horizontal length. Can you bring up the gable end elevation also? And you'll see, this one is a little higher, the one with the gable end over the addition is a foot and a half lower, and it was just personal preference which one, you know, there's no way to quantify it, which is better than the other. It's personal preference, and that's what Design Review is, pretty much. But going through all, and when I say the Mills Act, it's saying that they can do this, and that supersedes, in my view, a guideline. This is a contract that the city went into with the property and said, "You can do something similar to this. You do have to have it reviewed," which we're doing here, "and the Secretary of the Interior Standards are guidelines to live by." So I don't think we can go against the Mills Act contract and say you can't do something, and this was a solution to meet that Mills Act agreement. The applicant has been very good about modifying things and looking at different options, and I think they've done a good job of it, and I think if Mal would agree, would the Mills Act contract trump guidelines in general? I'm not going to make you hold to this one.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first of all, guidelines are just that, they're guidelines. The guidelines here are incorporated into the findings, so that's important, but they are subjective. Importantly also, the Mills Act here, which is a contract and therefore does have binding effect, does have a subjective discretionary component to it, which is exactly what's happening tonight. So certainly, it has a force of law, but the commission has discretion regarding what to approve or not to approve tonight.
Very good. And so this is what we came up with at Design Review. I think Zen will have a very good perspective on it, and also, we spent a lot of time on it, and I'm comfortable with either of the two solutions. The one proposed is certainly the one in the resolution, so I'm inclined to support this project, and if you have any questions at Design Review, please address them, and we'll try to answer them for you.
Okay, with that, I'll move down to the other member of the Design Review Subcommittee and solicit your comments.
Bart pretty much summarized what happened in the Design Review Subcommittee meeting, but I'd like to add something to that. You know, that the black and white image is the first time I see it. This is new information for me. If I had, had I seen, had I seen this, I would have a little bit of different comment on the design. If we go back to the current two versions, because the original garage had a shed roof going to the side way, and we didn't know what the original garage looked like, and the condition of the historic agreement reads, "The area of the garage addition, especially the roof, shall be modified in a manner so as to be more compatible with the historic character of the home." At the time, we can only refer back to the main structure because the original garage, we didn't know how it looked like, how it looks like, and now we know it based on that black and white image. And I would say, if I could go back to the time, I would suggest that over the garage, we have a similar shed roof. Yes, it will be wider than the very beginning, the 1927 home, but it will restore some of the historic character to the home, much better than either of these. These two are the best one we could get. We had three meetings, as Bart said, but I believe we can do a little better based on the image we just saw. If we had, for example, if we look at the top image where the rating is, change the rating into a shed roof going from the main structure toward the ocean, which we still have the garage door underneath it, but it brings back a important historic character of the original house back to the design. Then the second-story addition can stay, I guess, so that's my comment.
Mr. Talia, you want to read, can you read this? While you're reading it, Commissioner Ruhl, let's give her a line.
Yeah, this, I've been struggling with this one all week. I know people I have friends who've got historic property, so I appreciate it. It's really a labor of love, a lot of love to make it happen. I, looking at the Mills Act, at least from our packets, it looks like the only requirement is that they modify the garage to be more compatible with the historic character of the home, and we're discretionary review deciding what that looks like, and that can, I assume, can look a lot of different ways. But using the HPPA guidelines, well, let me ask, in Design Review, what was the discussion? Did you have any discussion about making the proposed extensions distinct from the original property?
Oh, we absolutely did.
And what...
It kind of morphed into this. We set it back, I believe, we moved back the front two or four feet and pulled everything back from the street, so the house was out in front of the addition. You'll notice the second story is recessed. The home is extremely simple in detail, so the addition is the same way. This is not an ornate home. So basically, the change in elevation, nothing lines up with the front of the house, either the garage or the second story, to make the definition between the two. And we didn't even, on the horizontal roof there, it doesn't connect with the existing roof. The existing roof just dies into the gable end.
Okay. Well, I'll say where I'm kind of struggling, and let other people go. Yeah, it sounds like it. You know, the other side of the house, too, has got, you know, elevation that comes out, and as I look at this, I, you know, I'm looking at, what, 25% extension on the historic house. It's subjective. Visually, it looks like that, and if I kind of look at the original structure and you kind of like block off the extension, I see, you know, a little beach cottage, Spanish Colón Revol, beach cottage, which is, you know, what it is, and with the extension, I, you know, I kind of can't get away with, it's hard for me to get away from the idea that it's now something more than that, that it's like a small ranch house or something like that. You know, I don't, from a purely architectural perspective, I wouldn't have, you know, take away all the historical stuff. I don't have any problem with it, looks nice, all that sort of thing, but I, you know, I don't think the backyard area, like in the site plan, is all that big, but it's probably big enough for alternatives to put something in back. It's...
If you want to ask the architect if the chair would allow, she could address that for you and answer those questions.
Sure.
Okay.
Because there is, because I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot, but there's something to be said for, you know, adaptive reuse, right? So...
Yes. Christine Sprague, architect for Barbara Silk. So we did consider all options for the addition in the back, where there's currently a deck, but the grade drops off very steep, and you can see that on the site plan. If you look at your site plan, there's topo lines. So even, we did the addition basically in the same plane as the existing. So the garage level pops forward, I think, one foot four, and the upper level pushes back four feet from the face of the original house. So, and then, in order to get enough square footage to make the project worthwhile, we went back an extra, I believe, two feet, pushed back in the back, and another foot to the left to get that square footage of, I think it's 450 square feet on the second floor for the bedroom, bathroom, closet. Those are not large spaces. All the interior spaces are appropriately proportioned to the existing house in size.
So, and I did see there's a new deck that's going to be built in back?
It's in the exact same footprint that the existing deck is.
Yeah, it's already there.
But that could be...
Rebuild.
It's a rebuild from a, because of dilapidation or...
Right, but it could be a room extension. I mean, that was a choice made?
There was a choice made. The most important room in this building is the living room, and the living room has a peaked ceiling with wood trusses, exposed wood trusses, and two French doors that go out to that rear, and that's where the view is to the ocean, and there's a fireplace in the middle. So to block that, the light off by, you know, getting rid of those French doors in order to put a bedroom back there or something, we just, we didn't consider. Plus, we had to address the deficiencies in this existing structure in some way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Talia, you've been patiently waiting and reading, so...
Yeah, so I've got a couple of comments. First of all, I'd love to have your kids talk to my kids about what to properly ask for for Christmas, so thank you. I guess I vote for the gable roof on the addition, but that's why I'm not on the Design Review Subcommittee, and I'm not an architect or engineer, so... But I do have, I do have a concern that I think was touched on briefly here, which was the contractual language that was entered into with the city and the prior owner of this house, and if nothing else tonight, you guys have heard me put on my lawyer hat, and I apologize for that, but I think it's important, and I'm going to read a relevant section here, and the language is... language is, is very, very important. So, the statement is, modifications may include a roof deck, square footage additions, or other similar solution, and they shall be subject to the review and approval through the city's cultural heritage permit process. And this is speaking directly of the area of the garage addition. And what this is, is if I'm a property owner, I rely upon this language that gives me permissive right to put this in. And, and I understand the historical context, but, but we have a contract that we have that we have to uphold, and we have a discretionary process that we have to go through to ensure that the additions and the remediation of the dilapidated structure that the Mills Act contract was trying to, was trying to correct is done appropriately. But, but we are somewhat hamstrung as, as a, as a commission as to what we can, what we can require and what we can request. They have a right to place a roof deck, to add square footage, and to come up with other similar solutions, which is what I think they've worked in good faith with the design review and subcommittee and the city on. And, and I also like the fact that we're taking a structure that's a historic structure, and we're, we're making it something that can be lived in with a family of four today. And so I, I support this, and I think regardless of our personal desire on some of these things, we have, we have a legal obligation that we have to probably approve this, so I support that.
Mr. Blackwell, you've been patiently waiting.
Well, your kids can meet my kids. They do ask for stuff like that. That's all you get for having a planner.
Good, good.
And all about CUPs and variances. And lumps of coal, and all that good stuff. But, yeah, this project, it's, it's a reasonable attempt at a correction, and it's, it's a, you know, a form that's going to follow, you know, an intended function. I think we could design this a few different ways. To Commissioner Ruland's point, you know, I do see opportunity in the rear portion. You know, there are some constraints that the architect described to us. I think it can be designed, but at this point, we're dealing with a design here, and we're being asked to approve or deny it. But there have been, there's another design in the mix here. We've got two options, it sounds like. And so my preference of the two would be to have the exposed gable version of this, because to me, from the frontage, it's, it's less massing. It doesn't look as monstrous, as, in my opinion, as the, the alternative does. And there's continuity in the detail. You've got an exposed gable detail to the right of the existing structure, and then you've got one introduced at, at the addition. And to my eyes, there seems to be more continuity. There may not be less massing, really, technically, but to me, it looks, it looks like there is less massing. Looks more, like the relationships are there, in my, to my eyes. So I can support that design. I can support either design, actually, but my preference is, is the May 10th design, so that's, that's where my...
Okay, let me wait in here a little bit. Waiting patiently here. To get everybody back to the ground level here, is the findings. And the findings we're required to make, which is the cultural heritage permit to allow these changes, and a minor exception permit for the 20% reduction in the side yard. So I want to remind everybody that that's what we are legally here to rule upon. And does this meet all the general appearance in keeping the character? The project detriment is not detrimental in orderly harmonics, and the city finds the proposed modifications, alterations, additions are sufficiently in performance with the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. So I'm going to support the project. I'm always very reticent about design on the dais. That's why I really rely on design review to get it right. We have, when we get to this 11th hour of iteration, sometimes better is the enemy of good enough. This, the basic structure, the basic historic house itself is really not being touched. It's the addition that they're obligated to make, and B, when you look at the place, you'd want to make. Now you get down to this iteration of choice, and the applicant has been very flexible. And gone through six planners and a lot of turbulence with city, community development through, from other forces here, and so it's time to move forward for this applicant to get this house, because there's other structural considerations that they alluded to tonight that have to be done. And to preserve, actually, the historic part of the structure itself. And so the longer we design this thing, the better is it to be good enough. So I'm going to support the project. Design review in the future, really get it right, but I can make these findings. I appreciate, once again, Larry Coberson's fine inputs, he researches things very well, but I want to try to make a balance here. The original house is being preserved. The iteration that's put on is obligated by the city to the owner, and the owner needs it, so I'm, I want to support it. Mr. Pally, you want to talk?
No.
Mr. Crandall?
I will have to apologize that I was the one that suggested to the applicant to bring both elevations forward. We had a split vote at design review. I was leaning towards the bottom of the two elevations, and if we have consensus that either/or works, I think we should probably request a nod of which one the applicant is, most favors themselves.
I prefer the simpler one.
The top of the two elevations?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm maybe overwhelmed as you guys...
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Smith, you've been waiting patiently down there with your light on, I think, or...
Well, I can make the findings, and I think that there is an issue of these old hints and has this being pretty small, and then saying, well, you know, you can't do anything about it, you got to keep it small. And I'm not sure that that's a legal direction, that you have to give somebody, it might be a good thought. This thing probably would look the best if it went back to its original garage scheme, which really was more elegant. But the, but the fact of the matter is, is that I think this is meeting the criteria, and I'm going to support it. It certainly look, it's going to look better in either one of those schemes than it does today. It's a really sad shape on that garage and the addition, so this is an improvement. If I could just give a nod one way or the other, I would, I prefer the lower scheme over the upper scheme. I like the way the angle of the roof on the left matches the angle on the right, and I think it plays down on the massing, and it looks, it just looks like a better fit to me. So I don't know if that means anything, but I just wanted to agree with Bart on that.
Mr. Wu, you've been patient.
I would, I would agree, and I would support either one of them. I'm the one who prefer, along with Wayne, the top version. I really regret that we did not have that original black and white photo of historic structure, because I believe that we couldn't do better. And it's probably a very easy fix. Just imagine that the railing area, that's about two feet deep, and you may, you may have to lose some of that deck area by changing it to a shed roof, but in my viewpoint, that would be a much, much better solution. Fortunately, we didn't have that information at the time. Mal, let me ask you a question. When we, when we were presented the new information, were we allowed to have it to go back and make some design revision?
No.
At your design review meeting, we did not have those information.
Is the question whether the DRC can go back? And that, that decision's been made at this point, we're at the commission level.
Let's see, Commissioner Blackwell?
But just for clarification from legal, I believe if the commission wanted to send it back, we could send it back for a revisit. Would it be necessary at this point in time? I don't think so, but I think we, we could, as a body, vote on, on that. Correct?
I suppose the commission could remand, although it's not, it's not being appealed per se, so it's a little bit different. It would be odd, I'm not sure it's ever been done before.
Mr. Ruland, you've been waiting patiently also?
Yeah, first, a question from Al, and maybe this is more for general knowledge, a little bit of general, general knowledge. Jason mentioned that he believed we have a legal obligation to approve based on the Mills contract. I wanted to know if you had an opinion on that. It seems like if we have a discretionary process, we, we have a legal obligation to give it a honest go. Do we have a legal obligation to approve what's put in front of us, or can, maybe you can clarify that a little for me?
So I think, I think first of all, just, just to be clear, I'm, I'm not sure that the statement was that we have an obligation to approve. So I, I think, I think what was stated is accurate, that there is a contractual obligation, which requires the applicant to come forward, as, as they have, with the options that they pushed, pushed forward, the DRC, not the commission. The commission has a legal obligation to, I think, review in good faith those, those alternatives that the applicant is contractually permitted to pursue. I think where the, the commission could find itself in a legally difficult place is if it was obstructing that ability of the applicant to push forward any kind of alternative dealing with the garage structure. And Commissioner Tally pointed out that there are alternatives provided in the Mills Act agreement, and one of those is being presented tonight. And if that, if that alternative is presented reasonably, then the commission has an obligation to take a look at it reasonably.
Okay, good. I want to make sure I understood, okay. Like I said, I've been struggling with this one a lot, and I, and I do very much appreciate the effort and money that you, you know, put into this. You know, I know it's, and we appreciate, always appreciate people, you know, working with the planning commission, working with the DRC and staff and cooperating. I just, I, I keep wanting to, want to do this, but I just feel like it changes the character of the home as it was built a little too much without, without enough of a justification of adaptive reuse. I know it would still be a small home, but I think it would still be a home. I think it could be argued both ways, too. So, you know, my colleagues coming down the other side is certainly not wrong or a bad thing or anything, but I see it as just being a little bit too big, changing the character of that, of that cottage a little too much. So for that reason, I can't make that finding, that finding F, that it's, that it furthers the city's goals of historic preservation. So that's my concern, so unfortunately, I can't support it.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add a comment. In the agreement, the first line, the first sentence, that the area of the garage addition, especially the roof, shall be modified in a manner as to be more compatible with the historic character of the home. So what the proposed design does is to eliminate that roof over the garage, at the same time, expand the roof on the second level. So I think we have to make a decision that that, that modification is in a manner to be more compatible with the historic character of the home.
I think that's the decision we are making.
Yes, that's what we're here for.
So I will make a, please. Recommendation for resolution PC 17019, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving cultural heritage permit 16434, and minor exception permit 17144, a request to consider a two-story addition remodel and site improvements for historic residents located at 404 Monterey Lane. And let me just get a head nod on the elevation that is most favored by members. I would like to see the, personally, the bottom of the two elevations used. Okay, so I would, with the recommendation that the gable end elevation be approved.
We have appropriate number, count here, but who?
I'm not supporting measures, so I don't think I should.
Is that one? You want a straw vote?
They had all, yeah, straw vote is fine.
You need to see the hands.
Twelve hands of the April 12th version, is that correct? Six, one?
So that's what the motion is?
Yeah, six, zero. Six, zero. Oh, I'm sorry, two? You didn't approve, you didn't...
For the top one.
Okay, he's, okay, we want everybody else voted for the bottom.
So you're...
Five, one, one.
So is your motion done?
That's...
Can I second it?
Five, the figure, one opposed, and one...
That's on the straw vote rendition. Now, Mr. Crandall's made the resolution to approve resolution PC 17019, and we have a second from Tally.
Can I ask a question? Are we, are we allowed to pick one out of two? Because in front of us, it's a, it's a top one.
That's correct. The top one is the application.
You're right.
Okay, I will modify it, that we make the condition of approval with the applicant's permission to utilize the elevation on the bottom that's currently labeled the April 12th version.
We have a second there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so it passes five, and with two opposed.
Are we clear on the, on the language? Is it April 12th, because it was wrong?
Yes, the one that's labeled April 12th on the presentation.
That's what was presented to us, okay? We have a motion, and we have five, two. Okay? That's Ruland and Wu. Okay, are we clear?
Great.
Ms. White, are you, are you clear?
I am good, so that, I'm good.
Okay.
If it's not five, two, then, and...
Ruland. Yes, correct. Okay?
To make clear, I support this project, but I don't think we should reverse back to this gable end.
With that, we'll go on to new business. There's none out there. Do you have something?
I would like to put something in new business and see if the commission would agree to request staff to invite the Pier Pride nonprofit to make a presentation to the planning commission at a study session, to present what they are proposing or even considering for improvements to the pier and the pier area with their nonprofit funds. And if possible, having that study session on TV.
I would support that.
Yeah, I would absolutely support it. I've seen the presentation, they're doing some wonderful work there, so it's really worth, really worth hearing what, where they're going with that, so.
Just one question on our purview. Does it cover the pier, or is that more BP and R?
It covers the, covers the pier and the area around it, at the train station, et cetera.
Plus, plus the pier's in the historic structure, so...
One of the great debates. Yeah, I'm in favor, that'd be great, yeah.
Okay, for reports of commissioners and staff, the Public Safety Task Force did meet on last month. On July 7th, we will meet again on August 18th at fireside room at the community center. We worked on a strategic, sort of, set of strategic principles to work on. There's going to be two, kind of, two poles of that, one that police chief's got to work on, one the city, city manager, assistant city manager really, really attended the meeting and kind of ramrodding it. There's the city part of it, as you work through this matrix study that was done by the city. And so it, it comes out in two pieces in a way that we'll work on together, the chief police from the policing standpoint, and the city manager from the budgetary requirements and the, and various other business aspects of it. So we've had one meeting, and we'll meet again in August 6th, August 18th. It's a Friday evening from four to six, perfect, perfect day of the week. Let's see, anything else from any other committees, commissions?
Yes, I've got a report from the Coastal Advisory Committee meeting of July 13th. So the committee... So, the committee reviewed a report by staff that got in some of the details on the environmental sustainability grant program and the nominees. And staff this year, this go-around has decided to take the grant pool and divide it into two pieces. So, there's a first cycle and a second cycle. First cycle, the recommendation is to, for a city manager to distribute the funds among two schools, the Ocean Institute, the Watershed Task Force, and the San Antonio Freeway Parks Foundation. So, just varying amounts, but equivalent to $6,000. And there'll be a second go-around later on in the year. The bacteriological report came up, usual, usual offenders. We had some spikes at the Poche Creek and Pico Drain, zero points between May seventeenth and June twelfth. There's plans still in discussion for mitigation measures at the pier, which may or may not include the netting. I'm sure you all watched the council meeting and discussions there. Staff is planning to complete an avian study to determine whether or not there are markers, avian markers in the, in the, in the water, which will tell us if it really is the birds. So, that's going to be an interesting point of information to have before we do all this mitigation, right, for the birds? But we're pretty sure it's the birds. So, in, that's what they're saying anyway, but the science will tell us for sure.
Look for the data.
Flying squirrels. Avian, it's still telling us it's avian. They have wings. So, in August, we're going to go over, the next, I'm sorry, in August, we're going to have the chair and vice chair elections, which Commissioner Smith will be a part of the voting. And we're going to review the statewide trash provisions plan. We're also going to talk about the social media policy, which may move out. It's a can that keeps kicking, but staff is, is very confident we're going to see something in 2017. We're going to get into the discussion on the incorporation, incorporation of zero waste into our city programs. So, the zero waste program is, you know, going to reduce plastic bottles, it's going to do all kinds of great things for the environment. So, there's discussions there, and that will continue in August. Coastal Cleanup Day is set for September sixteenth. We're going to talk about staff's, I say we, but the Coastal Advisory Committee is going to talk about staff's report, or I'm sorry, staff's cleanup manual. So, staff is putting together a manual on how to clean up the beach. So, we're going to, we're going to talk about that. Skipping for Trafalgar Canyon Outlet Project update, that's coming in September, Poche Diversion Plan update in September, and a possible discussion on the results of the opportunistic sander replenishment project at North Beach. So, we're going to talk about what happened, what the plan was, how it was executed, and what it looks like now. Is there any left? Where did it go if it's not there? As well as a discussion on the, the larger beach nourishment project that's also coming up. Possible discussion on impacts to watershed areas that may be caused by the proposed roadway, the big one that's, that's planning to come through our town. And so, that's going to be an interesting point of discussion at that level.
Things are heating up over there.
Yes, at all levels. All committees are on fire now. So, the next C A C meeting will occur on August tenth, 2017, at seven P M. at the Ole Hanson Fireside Room located at the San Clemente Community Center.
Did a great job over there. And Mr. Smith's going to arrive just in time for the Poche diversion. I think something has been burning, burning in, with you for many years, since I was on that commission, and you were there from Parks and Rec. With that, city planner, Greg, any tentative future agenda items to discuss what's coming our way here?
Just one point of clarification. You may know that the city council had initiated a mural ordinance, and they wanted that adopted by the end of the year. We were planning on doing the study session at the next meeting. It looks like we're going to have to push that one back, only because the planner who was working on that for us, as I said earlier, during study session, has broken her back in seven places due to an unfortunate accident and was lifelighted last week. So, I think we can all understand why that might be pushed back. But just wanted to give an update that we are, we're moving forward on that. We, we have a pause at this point, and we'll go forward later.
Wow. Let's see. I noticed that the Design Review Subcommittee next month will have outlet mall signage coming their way. Is that, did I read that in our current manual? Excuse us.
That's correct. The Design Review will be reviewing that at the next Designer Subcommittee meeting.
And the E I R is progressing its merry way.
It is. The applicant is finishing up the required studies, and once we have those, then the E I R will be wrapped up shortly after that, so that way it can go through its final review by staff to make sure that, you know, we have everything in there we need before it goes forward for public comment and review period.
Okay, coming soon. With that, I think we'll, a motion to adjourn, I think, is appropriate, right?
Can I raise one thing? Would there be interest amongst the committee members here to, in a study session or whatever, to take a look at the toll road situation?
Interesting you said that. Last night at council, they put in a contract to company firms to look at alternatives and ulterials, solutions over the next six months or so, and they allocated money for that. And one of the provisions of that contract was it would come back to them through the Planning Commission. So, that study effort will be coming our way, probably in the next six months, soonly. And so, that's, if you read, or look, re-look at the video from last night, you'll see that another little job jar was put on, in our fishbowl.
We've got sandwiches.
We've got sandwiches. Thank you.
But I, I do like the idea of a study session, because not only should we kind of, obviously, get up to speed on it, but we should be seeing what we should, what we should or shouldn't be doing, for that matter, regarding that, to, you know, address the city's needs on the toll road. What should we be prepared for? You know, are there things, you know, are there, are there approaches or perspectives that we should have as we move forward with various things that we're doing that, where we need to keep toll road issues in mind?
Anyway, there's move the foot, and it's going to be put on our plate as of last night, so. And I, I think I will get with the city planner here as we prepare, we will need to prepare for the outlet E I R coming to pass and how we get ourselves ready for that. Now, we'll put our heads together, and then how we're going to get every, all of us prepared and get ready for that.
With that, I move to adjourn, to adjourn a regular study session of the Planning Commission meeting to be held at six o'clock P M. on August second, 2017, in council chambers at City Hall located at 100 Avenue of Procedio, San Clemente, California.
Motion by Commissioner Wu, a second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Rulon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven, zero. Getting adjourned. Welcome, Mr. Rulon. We got through it.[1207.98]